Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We're going to get started with an invocation. I'll ask Councilman Greenwell if he'll lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, let's Councilwoman Sawyer, she'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. But would everybody please stand?
Our Heavenly Father, we give you thanks for the many blessings that you bestowed upon us. We pray for the safety of our police and firefighters and all the employees of the city of Oklahoma City, as well as all the citizens of our great city. We ask for continued guidance and understanding and wisdom as we go through today's work looking at our budget for the upcoming year. We ask all these things in Christ Jesus' name. Amen.
Will you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Aye.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call the meeting to order, but noting that we're going to be adjourning for the budget meeting just shortly. As far as process today, we have three presentations coming that I think will take about a half hour each. If you throw in a half hour for conversation and questions, we're probably looking at at least a two-hour meeting this morning. I thought it might be best if you have a question during a presentation, if you go ahead and interrupt and stop right there so we can ask the question while it's pertinent about the content that we're talking about. So don't feel like you have to wait until the entire presentation's over before we start a question and answer period. And with that, I will recess the council meeting, convene us the finance committee, and turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you. We've got the three departmental presentations this morning, and we're going to start with a overview of the budget. Doug Dollar is here this morning, and we're going to cover a little bit of what we covered last week and a little more beyond that. And just as we all know, there will be three budget workshops. The first is today, the second will be on the 20th of May, and the last one will be on June 3rd.
All right, well, very good. Pleased to be here this morning to talk about next year's budget. We'll start with an overview again of the big numbers for next year's budget. We're looking at a general fund of $413.9 million. $221.6 million is the total for the operating funds, other operating funds besides the general fund. $465 million is our non-operating fund total for overall, $1.1 billion total for the budget. Yes?
May I interrupt?
Yes.
How does that general fund number compare to the year?
So our original budget that was adopted at this time last year was about $400 million, so that's about a 3% increase over last year's original adopted budget. Over the course of the year, that budget's been amended for the $8 million that went for streets and other capital improvements, as well as our PO rollover. So our current budget looks higher than what was originally adopted, but those were all paid for by fund balance, not paid for by current revenues. So when you kind of compare current revenues to current, you know, what we budgeted for ongoing revenues, it's about a 3% increase.
Remind everyone to turn their mic on when they have a question, too.
Last week, we talked a little bit about some of the positions and the departments. We'll obviously talk about the individual changes within their budgets, but I thought it'd be worthwhile to look at the big picture of how our positions are represented or what groups, employee groups, they're in. So AFSMI, or the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, is the largest employee group we have at the city. They represent over 1,400 positions, or nearly a third of our employees. The Fraternal Order of Police represents our uniformed police officer positions. They have a total of 1,137 positions. That's an increase of 21 positions from the current year. And if you go back over the last several years, that's 113 additional positions that have been added as uniformed police officers. The International Association of Firefighters will represent 957 positions next year. That's an increase of six over the current year. And then the last category, we call management, but these are not only executives and managers, but also professional and technical professions, such as attorneys, auditors, accountants, planners, the civilian investigation specialists that we're adding in police, computer programmers, other classifications, and that totals 1,094 positions. You know, we talked a little bit about operating, well, let's see, I thought I was, there we go, operating and non-operating last week, but I thought I'd just highlight some of the funds that make up that operating budget. The general fund, of course, is the largest city fund. It makes up about 60% of the operating budget. And while there are no restrictions on how the general fund can be spent, the other operating funds are dedicated to specific purposes and can only be used for those purposes. So some of those include the police and fire sales tax, the 911, zoo sales tax, airports, utilities, stormwater drainage. All of those funds are where the city's operations are funded from. The non-operating side of the budget is where we primarily fund our capital activity, and some of the significant funds in this category include the MAPS III sales tax, capital improvement projects, hotel motel tax, debt service, and grants management funds. And we segregate these funds from the operating budget, so it's easier to get a true picture of how the budget changes for our core operations. As you recall from last week, the largest area of change that we had in the budget is in this non-operating side, which went up by 65, over $60 million, primarily due to MAPS III, again, spending more of that fund balance that's been saved up over the prior years. When we look at the overall revenue picture, taxes are the largest revenue category at $570.4 million, or about 52% of the total, with sales tax being, of course, the largest at over $423 million. Use tax and property tax, the other significant taxes. Fees and charges include things like franchise fees, licenses and permits, stormwater drainage fees, and they're about 15% of total. Transfers in come primarily from our public trusts that fund the operations in water, wastewater, solid waste, and airports services. Fund balance is a fairly large portion at 21.1%, and it's about $232 million. And of course, MAPS III sales tax is the largest one there. They've budgeted $95.7 million in fund balance. But our capital improvement projects funds also has a significant fund balance, being budgeted $49.5 million. And that's basically for projects that have been started but haven't been finished yet or coming up down the road here, so. When we look at the expenditure side of the budget, and again, look at those kind of by service area, this is again, that full $1.1 million budget. Public safety is the largest portion at 36%, but you'll see that public services and culture and recreation are both very significant portions of the budget. The MAPS III budget is counted in culture and recreation, so that's what's boosting the size of that area. General government, a fairly small piece of the overall total at about 4.1%. When we narrow that into just the operating funds, you begin to see the kind of shapes of the different sort of pieces of pie shifting a little bit. Public services is still very large because airports, utilities, stormwater drainage are part of the operating budget. But you see that culture and recreation has gotten much smaller as the MAPS III budget now drops off, because now we're just talking about operations. But again, now, public safety becomes an even larger portion at over half of the budget when we look at our operations. When we narrow that down again a little further, just to the general fund, public safety becomes even a larger piece at nearly 2/3 of the total. Public services is still significant at 17.6%. Culture and recreation is now down below 10%, and that's primarily Parks and Recreation and the operations at the Cox Convention Center and the Chesapeake Energy Arena. And general government becomes a larger share, and that's really because all of our general government operations are funded in the general fund, because that's where finance, personnel, city manager's office, municipal council's office, city auditor, clerk, they're funded out of the general fund. We talked a little bit last week about the budget process, but one of the things we didn't spend very much time on that I'd like to just touch on briefly is our strategic business plans. Our strategic business plans are created by departments every other year, and part of that development of that plan is to identify the major issues facing the department in the coming two to five years and the consequences of not addressing those issues. Generally, these are expressed as a trend, and so department issue statements will usually begin with statements like the growing demand for a certain service, or the increasing complexity of a certain issue, and that'll be followed by the consequence if that issue is not addressed. So the statements have usually concluded with, if that trend is not addressed, the result will be X. And many people have commented on this, that these seem awfully negative or bleak, because they are focused on negative outcomes. But the idea is to identify the challenges being faced by the department and what will happen if those challenges aren't met successfully in order to motivate a proactive approach to dealing with the issue. Connected to each of these issues are, in the strategic business plans, are the strategies of how they attempt, how they're planning to address those areas and improve performance, and then also how they're going to measure the performance. They have identified strategic results. There may be multiple strategic results for an issue, or there may just be one measure. And the strategic business plans, as they go through that, they identify all the services that they provide and group those services into like-minded, or like areas that we would call it programs. And so then those programs that are similar are grouped into a line of business. Sometimes you'll have it referred to as a division within a department. And so, for example, within, say, the Development Services, the Animal Control Program is a part of the Animal Welfare Line of Business. That's one of the five lines of business within the Development Services Department. So the budget book also contains each department's issues, strategies, and results, and as the departments present their budgets, they'll often include a review of those issues. And again, if they seem to focus on the negative, it's not that the department's outlook is especially bleak, but that they're following the design of our Leading for Results Strategic Business Plan. Each of the departments that are, the larger departments that are going to be presenting will be talking about their budget, but I thought I'd just spend a moment on those departments that are not going to be presenting their budget to the council with some of the position changes that we've got added in the budget there. And just starting alphabetically, the city manager's office adds two positions. The first is in the Office of Sustainability, the addition of an administrative coordinator to support the energy management program. In public information and marketing, a staff reporter is added to provide better communications with citizens and staff. The Building Management Line of Business and General Services adds a plumber to better implement their preventive and predictive maintenance program. In the Planning Department, the Comprehensive Planning and Urban Design gets two positions. One is the Division Director in that area. The duties of the Division Director had been assumed by the Assistant Director in Planning, but with this addition, they'll be able to separate those duties to allow for more focused leadership on comprehensive planning and urban design, and allow the Assistant Director to focus more on areas across the department. Also in that division or that line of business, an Assistant Planner is proposed, and that position currently works on health impact assessments, complete streets, access to healthy foods, and access to active living opportunities. It's being paid for through grant funding this year. It'll be split funded next year and then brought onto the general fund in following years. And so all the other positions that we've got that are added in the budget will be discussed by the departments who will be presenting here. So those are the only positions that are not going to be covered by departments. And we've already talked about the schedule. Today, we've got IT, police, and fire up next, and so unless you have any questions, we'd have to turn it over to Shad Meldrum.
Just to request, Doug, you and your staff continues to do a great job. Could you provide us with a schedule as far as the total budget and the general fund budget compared to our peer cities? Just listing out those cities and their budgets and ours for the upcoming year?
Certainly. One of the difficulties with comparing across cities can be different services offered, but we can certainly do that on that macro level, just to kind of give you that perspective there.
Okay, thank you.
And so much of how cities govern themselves has to do with the enabling legislation in that specific state. Tulsa's always a good model for us to look at, because they're a large city in dealing with the same, you know, playing field that we are. When you leave that, you almost have to ask so many questions about that specific budget that it's almost irrelevant, you know, the way that different cities divide it. But I shouldn't say almost irrelevant. It's not totally irrelevant, but maybe almost irrelevant. But Tulsa, I always think, is a good model for us to review.
An example of that is that some of them, they get pastures from state to provide social services, that the state's providing. So the state is, in some states, gives the local municipalities past few dollars to provide some level of social services, or we don't do that here. Bump the general fund up.
Yeah, Pat.
A quick question. Doug mentioned that additional personnel, one of the people in the city manager's office, in this Office of Sustainability, to help implement this energy management program. Could I get a copy of that energy management program?
Sure.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
Good morning.
And if you would, remindful that we're on television. If you'd introduce yourselves and any pertinent staff that might be shown, that'd be great.
Right, my name is Shad Meldrum. I'm here to give you the IT budget. First, I'll introduce David Grothe, our Assistant Director. Stacy Bone, she's over application support. Ralph Gibson is over security area and some infrastructure, and then Kerry Wagner is over our public safety support. And then also, Felice Pondkiller is our management specialist, and she helps put together this whole budget. So within your budget book, our section begins on page 207. Next slide. And yes, please stop me at any time that you have a question.
I've got a question before you get started, Shad. On your strategic results page, which is 209, I think, the estimate of your success is less than we've experienced this year. Is there a reason for that? And then there's no increase in your expectations between the fiscal '13, '14 target and the '14, '15 target?
I'd have to review that and get back to you on what, you're talking about the strategic result there of services provided to departments that meet or exceed service level agreements?
Yes, sir.
That comes out of the annual survey, and so 71% is our '13 actual, and we're targeting 71% for this year. Our estimate is 55%. I'd have to look at those numbers and see where it was that came out that low.
I'm just curious, because in all the budgets that we reviewed, and we're going to review today, there's that disconnect between what the estimate is for this year and the upcoming budget. Sometimes the numbers don't go in the right direction, in my opinion. Anyway, I was curious about how that works. One time, I asked this question before, and it was explained to me, and it made sense then, but I've forgotten why it made sense at that time.
And that one comes out of annual survey. I'd have to go back to the annual survey results and go in and look at the actuals that we put in there and decipher that. And in the presentation, I'll cover, we're building a new LFR application, and probably like a lot of departments, we're transitioning to this new application and going back and making sure the numbers are correct in there, so I'd have to look at that. So our department mission, and we're one of the departments Doug talked about, we did this biannually, we're one of the departments that did not do our LFR review last year, so this is the same as it was two years ago. I'll read it. The mission of the Information Technology Department is to provide business solutions and technology services to city departments so they can better serve the Oklahoma City community. What we have there is a picture of the construction tracking custom application. That was an internally developed application primarily for public works to help manage construction projects. That's one where we looked at what's out there in the industry and decided to do this internally geared to exactly how those staff and those departments wanted this to work. Next slide. Our strategic issues from LFR, this again, like Doug talked about, is, you know, we're talking about things that are hitting our department that are of concern. System security and data integrity is always one of the top things we're looking at. Demand for new technology, realizing business process improvements is something we're always concerned about with new technology. Operational funding and resources, and then advanced skill sets, both for the IT staff taking care of all this technology and then for the users that are trying to use the technology to do business. Running some numbers there, one thing we did two years ago in LFR is add a new demand measure called projects and backlogs. That was missing out of our LFR, so it was hard to tell from the IT department how much departments were waiting on IT to do for them. So some numbers there, there's 65 projects we completed since the beginning of this fiscal year. Within that same time, 122 new projects were requested of the department. These are major projects. We currently have 33 projects in progress that are being worked, and there's 152 projects still on the books to be completed. So what we're going to see there in trends over time is demand for new things out of the IT department are exceeding our capacity to get them done. The graph there shows within the line of business what the numbers look like, and you see our biggest area is enhancements. Departments and users are asking for enhancements that we're having trouble meeting. Next slide. The FY15 proposed operating expenditures, this is on page 214 of your budget book, and this shows in a graph what that looks like by our line of business. So you can see our biggest area is technology infrastructure, just taking care of all the backend stuff that runs all this, with the second being public safety support. Note there, administration looks high. 82% of what's in administration is non-personnel costs. That's where everything falls for training and furniture budgets and all of our chargeback from finance, and all that falls within administration, so that's why that looks higher. Next slide. This is the breakdown by department, so as we take, since IT's an internal service department, we charge all our costs back to the other departments. This is what it would look like broken down. So you can see there, I've hit on this, each year, half of our IT expenditures will go to police, fire, and court, so 53% of what we do is for those functions. Utility's 16, and then going down from there. So you can see that the big departments get most of service. Next slide. This is what our structure looks like. Again, this is following the line of business model with the programs underneath. Added in there, the parentheses show the number of positions per line of business. So in administration, we have seven positions. We're proposing to add a position there in the business services, which I'll cover on the next slide. Customer support, that's where we receive, that's where customers, we call when they want support. They need something fixed, they call them, they'll get service as quick as they can. There's seven people there. Application support, we have 21. Under application support is departmental systems program. We're looking to add a position there for additional support. Technology enhancements, there's 14 positions under there. Infrastructure, we have 26 people taking care of network server, security, and everything involved in infrastructure. And then last being public safety support at 27, and I'll cover that later. Remind you, we do all the outfitting of cars and taking care of the radio system and all that, so that's why that's such a large area. But there's three new positions that give us 102 total. This matches about where we were 10 years ago as far as departments, so we have not necessarily grown in the last 10 years. Next slide. Proposed major budget changes, this is on page 213 of the budget book. We're looking to add public safety to the public safety support program, inventory technician. We receive, across the department, at the radio shop, we received $2.5 million a year worth of new equipment out there. They're also doing radio supports. We have lots of parts and pieces. They outfit the police vehicles, including putting on the sirens and everything, putting the cages in the police vehicles, so there's lots of inventory out there. This is a need. We've known we'd need it for a long time. That's a picture of the parts room inventory out there, so this year, we're proposing to add that position. On top of that also, we also need administration, within administration, inventory tech for the rest of programs. The rest of programs, we're also receiving about one, over $1.8 million a year. This 2013 numbers of new equipment and technology that's coming through the department that we have to manage inventory-wise. Next one being departmental systems program. This was a request based on feedback from the departments. We meet with the departments biannually. Several departments said, so far, IT service is great, but we really are seeing that you guys are thin in certain areas as far as application support on Acela, CyR, those areas, we, across the board, have usually one person taking care of these things. So the department said, I really want better support on this, so that's why we're trying to add a position here. Last one, or the second last one, being the increase for annual contractual obligations. Within the IT department, we have all the phone systems, cell phone bills, everything. This $600,000 is the increase for those contracts and maintenance there. The last one there is...
Shad, what is Acela, and what is CyR?
I'll cover those in the next slides. The increase, last there's an increase in operational funding for server, network, and computing device replacement. This is a change that we worked with finance on. We used to do all this out of capital money. Now we're increasing our operational budget, because this is stuff annually we have to do. This money will actually cover all of our server, all of our network replacements on an annual basis, and about half of our computing device replacement. So increase of $600,000 there. Next slide. So working into the lines of business now, customer support, this is where they provide service desk, onsite support, and technology training functions. You'll see in the budget book, they resolved about 6,800 calls in the last six months. We, every call that goes out, the users get a feedback survey where they can say, you know, how satisfied they were, both on the timeliness and the quality, and we're running at 94%, which is LFR number we're reporting. So they're still satisfied with support we're giving there. One major accomplishment out of this line of business was they completed the XP to Windows 7 upgrade, which doesn't sound like a big deal, but you're probably seeing out in the news that Microsoft said April 8th of this year was the deadline. They announced that years and years ago, so we jumped on this, and that means that Microsoft is not providing any more security patches to XP, and there's lots of companies that have not completed this. So here at the city, we're complete, except for a few exceptions that have to stay on XP that we're managing. But I ran numbers this morning, or looked, actually, the IRS is one of the major areas that has not completed their XP upgrades, so they're spending millions of dollars to Microsoft to get that done. The other thing I want to highlight here, and I was looking, our presentation last year was on May 7th, and quite a bit has happened since May 7th of last year, including IT department having to move out of 100 Building for half the year. As you know, we had the May 31st rain down here, and then the flood of 100 Building, which, you know, impacted all the inventory. We stored our inventory in the basement of 100 Building, so we lost all that, which is one reason we're asking for an inventory tech also. We realize that we didn't have a good handle on exactly what was down there to report to insurance. But over that weekend, that, thank goodness, occurred on a Friday night, IT staff came down here and jumped all over this. They got, we actually lost 80 computers in the basement. We were able to get 90 computers from external sources. Our staff came in through the weekend, imaged all those computers. We got systems ready in case we had to fell over and actually vacate completely 100 Building, so that when city came, the city staff came back in on Monday morning, everything was business as usual, of course, in a new location where finance had to move to One North Walker. But the IT staff came in, jumped all over this, get it set up and ready to go, so that was a huge accomplishment. Next slide. Technology application support, this is a fairly large area. They essentially take care of all the enterprise systems for the city, or systems that touch multiple departments. So that includes patches, upgrades, enhancements, customizations, training, troubleshooting, and vendor management. Vendor management sometimes be quite a challenge for us. Critical city systems, just so you're aware, PeopleSoft HR and financials falls under this line of business, the new risk management system. SAP support for utility, utility runs SAP for their customer support systems. Electronic bidding, which is a new one. Service call and work orders, permits, code enforcement, animal welfare, fleet and fuel management systems, agenda management, document management, and then the GIS system. So on a lot of these systems, like I said, this is where a lot of times we have one person that knows that system, and they'll go on vacation and we'll have an issue. So this is an area where we're looking to add one more staff member to try to get some redundancy. And then we have expanded things like Acela within the code enforcement and in public information and marketing. So we keep expanding these systems and not adding support, so we're adding support this year. One thing I want to highlight there, when we talk about PeopleSoft, HR, and financials, we were required to complete an upgrade this year. We were on version 8.9. We relicensed Oracle in the fall, and then that required us to go to the 9.2 version, become up-to-date. So that was completed. We worked with several departments. Again, that was a multi-version upgrade. It took 15 months to complete, and there were 24 people from multiple departments representing on that project team. That was from finance, personnel, several other departments were on that project team. It affected 4,800 system users. In this, when we did the upgrade, we really took a look at how we're using the system and what we're doing. They were able to eliminate 38% of customizations, which is a big deal, because those are some of the things that are toughest to support in the system. So that also, we were also able to save 30% in cost savings. We only licensed what we needed out of the PeopleSoft/Oracle system. And then again, we increased overall usage within the department, so we're using PeopleSoft better now than we ever had before. I also want to... Uh, I also want to highlight there, this project went so well and you can probably read in the news, all kinds of failed PeopleSoft implementations and upgrades, those are fairly common. But, uh, this one went so well that the, the vendor actually wanted to use OKC as a case study and do a story on it. Okay, next. Uh, the next line of business I'll touch on is technology enhancements. They provide new technology identification, business analysis, custom application development, data management, project management, implementation services of city departments. Uh, we have about forty-five custom applications that we're supporting, all different kinds, sizes of custom applications. There's two hundred and ninety-eight production databases. Uh, within this enhancements line of business, they've created, completed thirty-nine projects themselves since July first. And thirty-three, uh, major projects are currently active. Uh, the screenshot there shows you the budget management application, which was a custom application built, uh, for finance. This actually helps the departments submit their budget, make sure everything adds up correctly and does this as efficiently as possible so that the entire budget could be put together. Uh, one thing we did this last year is work with finance to add in, uh, the LFR stuff to that so that actuals and targets and everything can be reported through the same application and easily put in. So this is a custom app that we have in the cities that, that was developed. Uh, one thing I'll note there, when we talk about the forty-five custom applications, within that group that actually develops applications, we have three staff members. So we're pretty much at capacity for what they're able to develop and maintain. Next slide. Uh, continuing with technology enhancements and project highlights, so you're aware, uh, one thing that was completed this last year was a custom parts room in, inventory application. Uh, that was something that's been in development for quite a while. Where we asked for staff this year, but we recognized within the, the public safety communications that we had this parts room for all these parts, but we didn't have a good way to manage all this from an application standpoint. So the way they wanted to do business, we've, we figured it was best to develop this internally. Uh, that application was developed internally for IT staff, but it was made so that it could be used elsewhere. And in fact, this year it's gonna be used for police supplies and ammo tracking. So it's being put over there also with their own flavor of it. Uh, again, the Acela system expansion, the code enforcement action center, that was completed in January or so. So now that got them off a older system that was not, we were not capable of upgrading onto the Acela system, which is the same system we use for permits. So because we're using the same system across multiple functions in the city, it makes it much easier, but much more efficient to maintain it. Uh, custom construction tracking and management application, like I said, was completed for Public Works. Uh, another big one, we implemented wireless communications for all traffic signals. So currently there's six hundred and seven traffic signals active. Those are all talking back downtown to the central traffic system within the Public Works Department. And one thing I want to highlight on that is we met with Trafficware, which is a vendor that supplies the traffic system. And they said that what we're doing with talking to these signals wirelessly and, and this was developed in-house, they're not aware of anybody else is doing this. None of, none of their other customers are doing it and they check the industry of their competitors, nobody else is doing it there. So they're actually using this as a model for other places in Florida and all that to say, okay, you don't have to run expensive fiber to all these signals. This is a way to, to be able to, to talk to the signal. So about six hundred square miles and this is a way we'll get them all hooked up.
We've got six hundred and seven signals in this, in the system right now. What percentage of our total system is?
I believe there's seven seventy total.
So we're very close to getting one.
Yeah, and it, it's going in line with, uh, the bond issue for the traffic signal replacement. So that's the only reason it's not done. I, I think over the next year they'll be completing those. So all traffic signals will be on and I, I know they're looking at school signals and other stuff like that with the same technology. Uh, another big one is Big Sync, which is the big tracking system and getting that in place. You recently approved the RFP release for the OKC.gov. That's not one that's completed, but I want to note that that one's going out there so we can start to get a vendor in here to work with PIM and get it OKC.gov redone and, and streamlined and make it better for the citizens. Uh, last one there is the data portal, uh, phase one. We've talked about getting data out there. One of the biggest requests I see for open records coming through the IT departments for GIS data, seems like, uh, three quarters of what I see is for GIS data. So this portal now citizens can go and just get what they want straight off that. And that'll be expanded as we, we move on according to what departments want. Uh, technology infrastructure, next slide, line of business. They provide security, network, unified communications and client configuration services to city departments. This is all the behind the scenes stuff that, you know, most users and especially citizens never see. Uh, there's eight hundred and forty-five network infrastructure devices have to be managed with over eleven thousand connections at a hundred and sixty different sites. So this network's pretty expansive, it has to be managed. Uh, four thousand telecommunications devices. There's five hundred and eighty-two servers now, that's a twenty-two percent increase. This is something we've noted year after year and Doug talked about trends. This is something where demand is outpacing, uh, our ability to support these. Uh, one thing I'll note there is you've probably heard of virtualization and we use virtualization heavily here in the city. Uh, that is how we're actually managing this many services with, this many servers with so few people. Uh, an analogy for virtualization, rather than everybody taking their own car down Broadway extension, this is, this is us having people carpool. So we're carpooling like crazy our servers to, to do this more efficiently. As far as cost savings, that means we have to have less servers to run more virtual servers. So the tremendous cost savings and capital expenses. Uh, one thing I'll note there is virtualization's really great, but it's also more, also more complex. So the requirements for that, the server staff to maintain this from a complexity standpoint is much higher than it was, especially five years ago. Uh, the last one there, this three hundred and thirty-six CCTV cameras we're managing, that does not include airports. So that's non-airport CCTV cameras around the city.
Chad.
Yeah.
Uh, this may be a good time to bring it, it up. Uh, you know, in your, your strategic issues, the first item was system security and data integrity. You know, with, with, uh, the problems we're seeing throughout the world, really with respect to large system security, I think that really needs to be emphasized, uh, every day. You know, uh, as you spoke about the Internal Revenue Service, their incidence of taxpayer fraud continues to grow at what I think's a pretty alarming rate despite their best efforts to control that. Uh, this past year we saw very large retailers, uh, their security system being breached and all of their customers' credit card information being accessed, uh, by hackers. So I, I just wanted to bring out the fact that I think that's probably more important, uh, than a level of service you're able to provide, even though it's very high. Our system security just can't be talked, uh, about enough, in my opinion, with all the information we have. Both from an employee information standpoint, as well as some of the information we see in some of the divisions such as police and, and others.
We agree and it's, it's a huge party for the department and something we, we take very seriously internally. It's one of those areas where you, you don't brag about how good you're doing it to, to invite, you know, people going, well, let's just see. So it's one of those we kind, we, we lay low a bit, lay low on, but definitely as far as investments and capital expenses and, and focus. And we meet with departments for department contact meetings, which we do quarterly. It's definitely something we talk about continuously and, and we stay on top of as far as, you know, what are the threats out there that we need to address?
Well, and as you expand to become, uh, you know, increase the use of virtual servers and other new developing technology, it just seems like it creates more problems from a security standpoint. So I appreciate all the work y'all do.
So this may be a question you don't want to answer then, but do we do external testing and do, do we use auditors or anybody to try to get in and?
Yep, we have all that.
Do random, okay.
Yeah, we, we, we use all that to, to constantly test whether, how good we're doing. So we don't just, we don't self-check ourselves. We actually have people that, that check to see how good we're doing and do reports and, and other departments do the same for, you know, utilities does their own. So we, we respond to all that and, and put whatever, usually the feedback is really good and they'll find a few things that, you know, with, with thousands of computers and all these sites, it's, it's a constant challenge. So there's stuff definitely we're aware of that we would like to address that, you know, we have on the books to try to take care of. But yeah, we do have checks that-
And the question, Chad, on the three hundred and thirty-six CCTV cameras, who owns those cameras?
Uh, various departments, this is non-airports, non-airports departments, but who owns them? This is primarily utilities and then a lot were put in for public safety functions and then some were put in-
And their primary purpose is public safety? Uh, if you had to pick a, a, a primary purpose for these things?
Yeah, we, we say they're for public safety's functions. Utilities has some like it, uh, water quality gates and all that, but they're all on one system so they can be used for public safety functions. So if there was an issue, then they would respond. The last line of business is public safety support. They provide public safety application, systems, communications, facility management to the, for the city. Uh, there's forty-seven public sa, individual public safety applications that they're managing. Uh, note again, the IT department is responsible for the nine-one-one center. So we, we manage that center over there with onsite support. There's a hundred and eighty-two outdoor warning sirens that we are supporting and, and making sure they work correctly. There's nine hundred and twenty mobile data computers have to be managed, they're all out in the field, about eight hundred and fifty of those are for public safety. So another seventy for the other departments. Uh, one accomplishment this last year I wanted to note is we converted, uh, all those field computers to LTE wireless. As opposed to the wireless system we had up for years, that will save about three hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars annually in both operation and capital costs. So that's a huge savings. And there's fifty-three hundred radios that have to be managed. Uh, we also want to note, when we're talking about the radio system, a reminder that, uh, other, other jurisdictions on our radio system, including Bethany, Yukon, War Acres, Mustang and Putnam City schools. So our radio system touches, uh, several, several cities around us and that, that helps with, uh, mutual aid and support and communication. That's it.
Any questions on the presentation? All right, sounds like you're good to go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate your staff's work on this.
Next is the Police Department, Chief City.
Good morning, Council, Mayor, uh, Bill City, Chief of Police. Uh, I'm gonna present the budget this morning, fiscal year fifteen. Uh, I'd like to introduce some staff. I first got Lieutenant Dan Stewart, who's actually going to, he works in planning, worked on this project. Also Captain Ryan Moser, uh, who is also on planning, Chief Ken McDonald and Business Manager Renee Sakal, who, uh, did a lot of work on this budget presentation. Okay, our mission statement, it hasn't changed this year. We did go through the LFR process. We really, we try to do it every year regardless, but this was our formal year to go through the process. Made a few minor changes, but the mission statement, uh, did stay the same. Our proposed budget, uh, for, for fiscal year fifteen is, uh, you can see the operating total is a hundred and seventy-eight million. The capital and non-operating costs, about forty million. Uh, that's primarily cars and headquarters and the bonds that were sold for the headquarters. Uh, and then we have less transfers to city funds, which is a wage adjustment for our, uh, police sales tax funds and our nine-one-one systems. That brings our total budget to two hundred and seven million. That is a, an approximate four point seven, four percent increase over last year. And you can see in the pie chart that the general fund is always makes up the largest portion of, uh, of our, our funding for the police department. Uh, police sales tax makes up twenty-three percent of that. Demand for police presence and services is our first issue. Uh, the, the growing demand for police presence and services coupled with the increasing scope and complexity of police investigations, if not adequately addressed, will result in slower police response times, increased crime rate and reduced percentage of crimes solved. Decreased citizen satisfaction with police services and feelings of community safety and decreased traffic enforcement. Our strategies, uh, towards that, the demand for police presence and services is a continued use of overtime programs to address high crime areas. We have several different programs that we use. We use grant funding. We have a new state grant, uh, overtime program that we received last year. Uh, we also use a considerable amount of overtime, uh, for the vacancies that we had from the positions that you have added over the last two years, which, which, uh, we all feel have made a significant impact in being able to put more officers in the field and the reduction of crime in, uh, year two thousand and thirteen. Uh, increased traffic enforcement citywide, increased personnel and investigations, operations and our community-based programs.
Excuse me, Chief, on the increase in the, uh, traffic enforcement?
Yes, sir.
How do you go about doing that?
Well, we, we have several programs. We have overtime programs, we have some overtime programs are funded through the state for like DUI. Uh, we primarily put extra officers out in the field during our, our peak overlap days, we have more officers in the field, Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays. Uh, we've made things like school zones and those types of things during the school year a priority. Uh, we, we identify the hu, the high, high accident areas, intersections and those types of areas and have the divisions put specific officers out in there to monitor those areas and, and enforce traffic laws.
If I might make a suggestion, you might want to talk to some of your officers about their cars, the marked cars, obeying the traffic rules very carefully? Because I've had a, a constituent complain about an illegal left turn, she said the police do this all the time. So I, I just need to, if, if, we should use y'all as an example of how it should be done. I think it's important.
We'll reinforce that. We, we address individual complaints, I hate to sound a regular basis, because out of all the cars we have and all the number of calls we take, it's really very minor, but we, but we'll emphasize that further. Thank you. Demand for police presence and services by two thousand and eighteen, police presence and services will adequately increase while maintaining the level of core services citywide as evidenced by. And as you can see here, these are, these are based on the surveys and our targets, our targets are set on, on actually the first survey that was, that was conducted in two thousand and five. Uh, feel safe citywide in two thousand and twelve, you can see the survey showed, uh, fifty-three percent. And in two thousand and thirteen, it went up to fifty-eight percent. Our target in two thousand and five, our first survey was actually fifty-five percent. So thirteen, we did, did about three percent better. Uh, satisfied or very satisfied with the quality of police services. In, uh, two thousand and twelve, we, uh, we were rated at sixty-eight percent, we're sat, we're satisfied, we're very satisfied. And thirteen went up to seventy percent. And, uh, you can see our target is a little bit higher. In two thousand and five, we actually were at seventy-two percent. So that's, that's our benchmark. Continuing our results, uh, our, these are our, our priority one calls. This is, this is primarily stayed the same. Uh, again, we benchmarked that based on, at ninety percent, uh, based on the consultant that we brought in and, uh, back in two thousand and nine and ten. Uh, but the percentage of priority one calls responded to within nine minutes and thirty seconds, we are at seventy-two point three percent. Uh, if you compare that to twelve and thirteen, we were right at seventy percent. So we're, we're a couple of percent higher, but it usually hovers around that range between seventy and seventy-four percent. Again, ninety percent is our target. As we add officers, that should improve. As we get new officers out in the field, that should improve. I'm not sure that, that, the, the mark may be a little high at ninety percent, but I would surely hope to get up into the eighty percentile at some point. Uh, you can see here where our investig, our, our clearance rates, it shows, I have two categories. UCR is actually the, 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 the data that we provide to the FBI. Investigates in clearance rates per crimes, the national UCR. And all we have is two thousand and twelve, because two thousand and thirteen won't come out until October. Uh, so two thousand and twelve was forty-six point eight percent. Uh, for two thousand and thirteen, uh, we showed a forty-nine percent, which was an increase. Again, the, the official national UCR hasn't come out yet. Investigation, uh, clearing rates for property crimes, our UCR, uh, for two thousand and twelve was nineteen percent. We've always hovered below that. Uh, you can see we're at twelve percent, that's one area in property crimes that we'd like to increase as we add more officers in, in, in different areas. But we've always made the, uh, person crimes a priority for obvious reasons and, and as a result, property crimes have suffered somewhat. Plus per capita, we do have a lot of, of, of property crimes compared to other cities. Uh, our actual LFR, actual LFR for fiscal year fourteen is seventy point two percent. You can see that clearance rate is much higher, but that includes all property crimes. That includes all the minors, because the, the UCR, just the major burglaries, auto thefts, it doesn't include minor larcenies, petty theft, those types of things. So, but we want to measure that also and so in measuring that, our clearance rate is, is it, is it seven, seventy-two point two percent? Our target is sixty-eight percent, so we're running a little bit above that at this point. Uh, clearance rates for property crimes in LFR for fiscal year fourteen is, is twenty-seven and almost- and almost twenty-nine, twenty-eight, and our target is twenty-seven. Issues, one of our issues that we've been, we've been addressing over the last several years is the violent crime, because of the increase over the years, and a continued trend of violent crime, if not adequately addressed, will result in increased assaults and homicides, increased gang violence, increased demand on public safety services, and decreased feeling of public safety. And those, those basically are the same issues as they were last year. So some of our strategies, we have increased police presence and enforcement in strategic areas using overtime initiatives. Again, as I mentioned before, we have several different initiatives. We have the, the, the state sa- public safety grant. We also are using quite a bit of the overtime for, to target our, to target our areas, high violent crime areas, based on the, the vacancies that we have currently. We also added an additional day shift gangs, and I'll talk about that a little bit later in the presentation and some of the, and when we're adding, talking about the proposal to add police officers. Our continued efforts to reduce crime through community-based programs and social outreach. We'll talk about some things that we, we've, we've done this, this last year as far as our social outreach services. Continued recruitment, hiring and training of new officers to fill vacancies. Obviously, that's a priority. We're adding, we're adding more officers, and we need to get those officers trained and out in the field as, as soon as possible. Our results that we're measuring for violent crime, in two, by two thousand and fifteen, reduced the number of aggravated assaults citywide by five percent. We, we, our target last year was five percent, when we, when we gave our presentation to council. Last year, actually, for thirteen, we reduced it by thirteen percent. So we were more than double in the reduction of aggravated assaults, based on a lot of the programs and, and things that we talked about previously. You can see here, we're counting new year thirteen, actual is thirty-two ninety-six violent crimes. That was the actual number, and our calendar year to date, fourteen, actual, we don't have a number in there, because all we have is really one, one month to measure, so we did not put a number in there, because it's just, the number's too small to really make an adequate comparison. Our ta- target again is three thousand one hundred and thirty-one. Obviously, we'd like to have another thirteen percent, and, but five percent is our target as it was last year, and that, that reduction would be fewer than thirty-one hundred thirty-one violent crimes, aggravated assaults. By two thousand and fifteen, reduced the number of drive-by shootings by twenty-five percent. You can see in calendar year thirteen, we had eighty-nine. Calendar year actual so far, and this is up through March, so this is about four months, we've only had fifteen, so we're, we're headed to, to exceed our, actually exceed our target in trying to have less than sixty-seven drive-bys in a, in a, in the next calendar year, in the fifteenth. So we're doing real well in that regard. You, in two thousand, to compare, you can see we're calendar year thirteen, we had eighty-nine. If you want to compare that to two thousand and twelve, we had a hundred and ninety-two. So we more than, we more than reduced that, along with the other things that we were doing. By two thousand and fifteen, reduced the number of gang-related deadly weapon assaults by twenty percent. This is a, this is a new, this is a new result, a new measurement. We really want to track gang-related homicides in, in the use of deadly weapons. We, we had not been tracking that before. That's why in calendar year thirteen, you're not going to see any numbers, because it's a, this is a brand-new measure. But in our estimates, in our estimates, we would like to reduce it by twenty percent. That twenty percent would be, we, we feel like would be less than seventy-six, based on some manual counts and things that we've looked at. Because normally, I think we, we've anticipated, there's probably ninety-five or so of those in a, in a calendar, in a calendar year. So our actual right now is twenty, and that's, that's through March, so that's four months. So we're on track to, to be able to, to reduce that also. You can see our, our chart here, last year, it's the same chart, it went up to two thousand and, went up to two thousand and twelve. You can see the reduction, the thirteen percent reduction in aggravated assaults between two thousand and twelve and two thousand and thirteen. So again, it's just a, you know, it's just to show you exactly the reduction that we made last year, and hopefully continue, make that, that go down this year. I think what's interesting in, in addressing all the assaults and all of our priorities to address the aggravated assaults is that all crimes went down, almost all. I think there was only one, maybe rape, that went up, but we had definition changes that we had to report that caused some of that, not all of it. But burglaries really surprised me. Our burglaries were reduced significantly, and that's the first time in a long time that I've seen Oklahoma City with, with fewer burglaries. I mean, it had consistently gone up.
Chief, did you all, do you any research to, to determine what caused that steep increase in two thousand and seven?
We've looked, we've looked at that, and, and we, and to be honest with you, we don't, we can't tell you exactly why. You know, drive-bys were, were still higher than we, they have been the last two years, but they're not as high as they have been. You know, I, it's just, it's very difficult. It may be, it may be, have to do with so- something, a little bit with how we count them. You know, when we, I think we're doing a better job now of, of actually identifying what is an aggravated assault versus a regular assault. We know that our misdemeanor assaults were much higher between, in, in, between two thousand and six and two thousand and seven, and lower between two thousand and seven and eight. So a lot of those, either were just more serious assaults, or, you know, we weren't, weren't quite counting them. And that's the problem with UCR, there's a lot of discussion nationally with UCR inadequate that the accounting is, because departments do it different. You're relying on human, the human, possibly human error in, in categorizing what those are, different cities categorize them differently based on what their state laws are, or what that type of thing, so. But I, other than that, probably the basic answer is no. I, I can't give you a complete answer.
You can do whatever.
One of our issues is advanced technology. This is, this has always been in, in our LFR, and it continues to be an issue. The increased use of advanced technology in the commission investigation of crimes, if not adequately addressed, will result in increased time and resource requirements for investigations, unsolved crimes, increased crime, and decrease in citizen satisfaction with our police services. Our strategies, by two thousand and seventeen, increased the number of digital and other electronic media device examinations by one hundred percent, for a total number of two twenty-eight, I'm sorry, four twenty-eight. This actually changed, because our, our, our strategy before was prim- was primarily, would be hard drives, not all devices. You know, our, our forensic examiners now in investigations, it's iPhones, it's iPads, there's so much technology out there, that we're, we've included all those other things just besides a hard drive. And, and when we do an investigation, there's almost always something on a computer, somebody's iPhone and things like that. Once we get those search warrants and, and look at, look at that information, it could include, could include a number of different devices on a single event, a single crime. So that numbers, that number's higher than it has been in the past. One hundred percent of all DNA cases submitted for property and person crimes will be analyzed with, within ninety days. You know, right now, we have a backlog of DNA cases of about a hundred and thirteen, which is not necessarily a bad thing, because we're doing more right now than probably most major cities are doing. Several years back, we trained our officers in the field to actually take DNA samples. That means on a burglary pro- property crimes. We probably take more DNA off of property crimes than any other, any city in the United States, because most programs are just based on, you know, on, on them calling out a special unit and taking those samples. But officers now take them on, on every case. So we have DNA samples on a possible suspect. We may not have the DNA on that suspect at that point, but when we do get that, if we do get that, then we're, we're able to tie them to that crime.
Chief, a question on your DA, DNA thing, which is really a great idea. Do you have a verification process in place?
Verification on?
On DA, DNA results?
Yes.
We had some problems several years ago with the?
We did. Back in the two, back in two thousand, our DNA lab, we had some issues and problems, but we are certified nationally. Program is, we have a really good program, and obviously, you have to have redundancy in those programs and those checks, so there's not more that, there's more than one chemist that checks those. And then we have an outside entity so many times a year that actually pulls that information, and we provide that information to them on the test. They retest it and send us back whether or not, you know, it's kind of like an audit for our DNA lab. Some of our results that we're measuring, in advanced technology, by two thousand and seventeen, increased the number of digital media forensic examinations by one hundred percent, like I, I talked about before. Our actual in fiscal year fourteen was two sixty-four. Our target in fourteen is three twenty-five. Our target in fourteen is three twenty-five, and our target for fiscal year fifteen is three fifty. So we should reach our target in fiscal year fourteen, and then it's, it's been increased, obviously, for fifteen. By two thousand and fifteen, one hundred percent of all DNA cases submitted for property and personal crimes will be analyzed within ninety days, as I stated before. Our actual right now is seventy-four percent, and our target is one hundred percent. We want to be able to get all of those analyzed within ninety days and not have that backlog. Metal theft. A continued trend of metal theft is not adequately, if not adequately addressed, will result in increased number of citizens victimized by metal theft, increased perception of crime, increased demand for city services, and decreased feeling of public safety. You know, we had metal theft in, in our issues three or four, four or five years ago, felt like we were doing a pretty good job, took it out, and we put it back in here in the last couple of years, so we had this, we actually had this issue in, also in our presentation last year. Continued use of the metal theft unit to improve tracking and investigation of metal theft crimes. I think one thing that's going to enhance this, this year over last year, is we're, and I'll talk about the position that we're adding, but we're adding, we're adding a program, a software called Leads Online. We're contracting with a vendor that actually provide, also will actually help us track metal thefts within our community, as, as well as in other states, because Leads Online is an, is almost a nationwide program at this point, and a lot of other neighboring states have that, so it'll help us. We've already looked at, they've already seen, when we put the Leads Online in, we've, we can already see, there was one individual we saw that's from Oklahoma City, and he's taking on a regular basis to another, another state metal and selling it and trading it. Well, usually, there's only one reason they're having to take another, other state, because we have plenty of recyclers here, is because it's probably stolen property. It gives us the opportunity to look at that individual and maybe track that individual for some of these thefts, so I think it's a, it's, it's going to be a really good program. Proactively increase the quantity of metal theft investigations presented for prosecution, increase coordination with metal recyclers to improve compliance with applicable laws, which is one of the key components, is working with the recyclers and trying to prevent them from taking stolen property in the first place. Our results, by two thousand and seventeen, increased the number of, of metal theft investigations presented for prosecution by sixty-four percent to a hundred and sixty. You know, if we, if the, if the program starts working, I mean, in the beginning, we're probably going to increase that number, but hopefully, at some point, we start having fewer metal thefts, and there's actually a reduction in our cases that we have to present to the district attorney. But as you can see, in the, in fiscal year fourteen, our, our actual is ninety-eight, our target is a hundred and twenty, so we should reach that target, and then our target is increased to a hundred and thirty for fiscal year fifteen. Fiscal year activities for metal theft suspects arrested for thirteen was ninety-five, our actual right now is fifty-one. Individual charges filed, eighty-one versus fifty-three for this fiscal year. And compliance checks conducted in fiscal year thirteen was a hundred and four. Fiscal year this year is a hundred and three, so we'll, we'll surpass that. But what's really, really interesting is, is those compli- same compliance checks, if you look at, if you look at fiscal year twelve, we had one, we had one compliance check. But as you know, we changed the laws, you changed the state laws, you changed the ordinances to give us more tools to be able to hold recyclers accountable, so that we could go out, and they had to show us, you know, what was on their books and those types of things. So it goes from one to a hundred and four to a hundred and three, and those compliance checks are, are critical in trying to, in, in ho- holding legitimate recyclers accountable. And, and there are a lot of good legitimate recyclers, but it, it makes it hard for the mom and pop recyclers that are really bent on maybe breaking the law and taking all kinds of property. It makes it very difficult for them, because we do do those checks. And the actual metal thefts, also in, in twelve, it was a hun- was a thousand and five, it went up to eighteen hundred and thirteen, and fiscal year this year we're at nine fourteen. So it's going to be, it's going to be lower than it was last year. And, you know, it may be, it'll probably be a little bit higher than fiscal year twelve, but it will be lower than last year. Okay, now we're going to get into some of our budget changes for this year. As Doug talked about, we're adding twenty-one additional sworn positions at one point, almost one point five million. Seven officers for day shift gang unit. This, this is, we, we right now, last year, did a pilot program and increased our gang unit by seven, by seven officers. It's actually six officers and a lieutenant, but it's really helped tremendously as far as helping us identify some of the, the gang members that committed violent crime the night before. We've got them in jail much more quickly, got them identified much more quickly. They work in concert with our gang intel units and then our gang officers that work nights on the street, so it's had a huge benefit. The pilot program has, and we want to make that permanent. So basically, out of the twenty-one officers, seven of those positions are going to, are going to go to make that, that permanent, because we think it's that important in helping the reduction of, of violent crime. Now, we're going to add two officers for vice enforcement. We, with all the special events, with all the alcohol-related issues that are growing and growing in Oklahoma City as a result of special events, we really need, we've had four vice officers, you know, for years and year, for as long as I can remember, and we haven't increased that, so it's, I think it's necessary to do that.
Excuse me, Chief, I think that's a great idea, especially when it comes to certain shopping centers that have nightclubs that produce crime. I think it's very important that we do have extra police officers to deal with situations like that. A few weeks ago, there was a gentleman who came in front of us in tears because of something, it was a shooting, and several people got shot, and he was basically in tears. So I think this is a job well done. Thank you.
Thank you. It'll help us be a little more proactive, hopefully. We're going to add four officers to investigations. I mean, we're looking at homicide and domestic violence at this point, put those officers in those units. One officer for special investigations, this is narcotics. There's a possibility we'll do some more interdiction-type investigations, but either way, with the number of cases that we're working on now, really big cases in conjunction with the FBI and other agencies, we actually, we could, we could use more than that, but we're going to take one of those positions and put it in, in narcotics. Two officers for homeless outreach team. This is probably, Councilman Sayre knows probably more about this than anybody, but we have, we have, we have had a special program, pilot program with two officers that specifically focus on getting out in the field and working with the homeless. These are officers that have been working in Bricktown. They've dealt with the homeless issues on a constant basis because of their assignment in Bricktown and the downtown area. We actually sent somebody to Colorado Springs to, I mean, to Kansas City to look at a program that Colorado Springs has had for quite a few years with great success in dealing with the homeless. It's really a, it, it's twofold. One, it's proactive. We try to identify who the homeless are, we try to get them services that they need. And secondly, if they need to write citations and, and clean up camps, they'll also be working on that also. So it won't just be in the downtown area, it'll be in some of the outlying areas where you have a lot of, a lot of peddling, a lot of that, those types of activities going on, where they'll be able to specifically address that. And the, and the, the real great, great part of that is they really get to know the people, because a lot of the people are here, they're here for quite some time. They know exactly why they're here, whether or not they're actually homeless, or whether or not they're just peddling, because they make a lot of money, and that's what they, that's how they live. So we're, we're really able to be proactive. A good, a good, at least a really short story on that, is our two officers found one lady, there's a lady that's, that's been homeless downtown for years, and they have not been able to talk her into getting services. I mean, West End and, and everybody, had tried to work with her, other, other nonprofits have tried to work with her. These two officers built a rapport over several weeks, spent a lot of time with her, visited her, and finally talked her into letting them take her to get services. One of, one of the primary obstacles is she couldn't get an identification, so the first thing they did is they got ID for her. Once they got ID, they took her to other social services, these two officers, and it may seem like a lot, but this, this lady now is living in, in residential, because And it may seem like a lot, but this, this lady now is living in, in residential because they took the time, took the time to take her and get what she needed. And they didn't do it all. They didn't provide the social services and they provided the means to, to have her get those social services. And that's, that's that preventive side of this program that I'm, you know, we're pretty excited about. So, we'd like to make that permanent. So, as a result of adding 21 officers, we would like to add two officers. It also provides more officers in the downtown, Bricktown and downtown area, which is over time is, we're seeing it already because there's so much residential going in and there's so much more activity. We're just going to have to increase some of the permanent staffing as well as supplementing it with overtime.
Chief, if I could just comment, oh, sorry. I guess if I could just add to that a little bit, I really want to thank you for being so creative in the approach and, you know, not only have your officers taken the time, but they've also met with, you know, the different social services providers. They've developed a rapport with the nonprofit community. They are better educated about what's available so they can make those connections. And, you know, from a pure economic standpoint, I think we know, you know, a couple of years ago, the Homeless Alliance did a study on one guy and he cost the city something like a million dollars. If we can prevent that and we can get people into housing, there's a true giant economic positive impact on our community. So, taking this approach of having these guys, the special team out in the streets is really a, a great approach. I thank you so much for focusing on it.
Well, I'd like to give Lieutenant Wade Gorley, who's down in Bricktown, a lot, most of the credit because it was his, it was his idea. He found the program. He, he, you know, he really, he, he's the one that started the pilot program. He was actually doing it before I ever approved, approved the pilot program, but that, you know, it's, he, it was, it was really good and we sent him, he's the one we sent to Kansas City and, so I have to give him a lot of the credit. You know, we have great staff that's very creative, like you said. He did a, he did a great job. Other budget changes, we're going to add one officer for special events. As I said before, special events has grown a tremendous amount over the years and so we're going to, we need another staff person working in special events. One officer for vehicle for hire unit with, with, with the changing environment of vehicle for hire as we're going to, as we'll see and you'll see in the future, possible suggested ordinances for the, for the addition of, you know, other vehicle for hire operations. We're, we're going to have to add another person for that. It's just too much for one person. One officer to Saturday to Saturday and one lieutenant Saturday to Saturday to complete that. We'll have, we'll have the 64 total officers we'll need for that Saturday, Saturday overlap and eight lieutenants. This will, this will complete that. So, and we will actually, the class that we have in, in, that's, that's starting, this next class will actually be the first class that's going to be going out and assigned to that Saturday to Saturday. So, sometime, you know, within the next, hopefully eight or nine months, we'll see that Saturday to Saturday program.
Once you get Saturday to Saturday going, are we going to be able to take a look at Friday to Friday as well?
Yes, and I, the, the thing is with these 20 positions, I had so many other critical needs right now. I didn't want to do that. Plus, plus I want to discuss some of the issues with the internal order police like we did last time, but I, I think we'll, we'll, I think we'll work that out. And so, probably any additional positions after this, hopefully we'll start looking at building that Saturday to Saturday. Once we, I mean, Friday to Friday, once we get Saturday to Saturday completed.
Thank you, Chief.
Also, we're going to add one officer for recruiting. The demands on recruiting obviously are tremendous because we're really trying to crank the classes out and get enough people in the classes to, to fill the new positions as well as we're reorganizing and we're going to have a dual role for that person because we have, we teach Spanish classes to our recruits, have about 70 hours of Spanish. And so, we're going to have a dual role for that person also. So, we're changing organization a little bit to do that. Also, one computer forensic examiner. Now, we've had this forensic examiner. It's been funded since 2007.
Chief, can I ask you a question about the?
Yes, sir.
Over, because we're, you're leaving the, the, on the street personnel and going to the administrative. This is the first year in several years that we've not added an additional recruit class. We've just, we're going to have one class, but instead of having, like we've had two the last two or three years, I believe, we're only going to be able to put, do one this time. And it's my understanding that the reason that we can't, that it doesn't make any sense to add another class at this time is that we don't have the training capacity to get them out in the, in the, in the field within the fiscal year that we're talking about because it takes longer than six months to run a class through, is my run.
Have we done anything to, to, to look at a way to alleviate that by sharing a recruiting, I mean, training space? You know, Fire only has one class a year, so they, and it doesn't take a full year to run people through. There are other training facilities and I wonder if you couldn't just somehow coordinate the front end perhaps of a, of a second class by using another facility to train them and, and get us back where we could add another, another full recruit class to try to get us back to that level that we're all wanting to get back to.
Right. Actually, our, you know, our, our class has grown to seven months. So, we get two classes in within a four month, 14-month period. So, there's, there's, there's some overlap there. So, it's a little more than, you know, it's not quite full two classes because we used to, you know, it went from five to six where we could get two classes in basically a year. And now we've increased it by a month just out of basic requirements and needs.
But, but Chief, you are continuing classes. When one graduates, you, you continue the cycle.
Right.
No, understand that.
They're back to back.
I understand that we're doing that, but what that does is eventually, and this is the year we're not going to add that extra, we're not funding an additional full class. And what I'm asking is, is there a way to, to start a class in the, in another facility or use the facilities, the other city facilities like the fire facility or other city training facilities and, and be able to, to go back to where we can get an, an extra 40 or 50 recruits every year? I, I, I feel like to some extent, I mean, I'm somebody that three or four years ago, at least intellectually committed to two classes a year until we caught up. And, and now I'm convinced that we're, that the overlap has caught up with us and that really does make a lot of sense to continue to do that. So, I mean, not, I'm not arguing that we should add it now, but what I'm wondering is, has there been any thought given to try to dovetail the training facilities that we have so we could, so we could get back to where we're doing that?
Right. And I think, I mean, I mean, yes, that's possible. I mean, that would always be possible to add a class or use Fire or try to do off-campus top classes, but it's really, I think, one of the primary, primary issues, there's a couple of primary issues. One is, is just being able to staff that training because most of our training's in-house and our qualified trainers, we would have to increase that. We'd probably have to also increase our full-time staff in, not in, in training also as well as our FTO program right now, which is our field training program, which is five months. Once they get out of that seven months, they go do the field training program and are assigned a field training officer. Then we would have to obviously increase that field training officer staff, which is a possibility, but, you know, as we're adding resources maybe in the future, then we can, we can add more trainers and do some of those things. But I think the, the, kind of the barriers right now is just, is basically finding the staffing to be able to put on those quality programs that we want to put on because, you know, it includes, it includes firearms. So, staffing at firearms, driver training is a portion of that. So, and again, you know, it's, we are still doing two classes in 14 months versus 12 months, but, you know, I, I, I think some of those barriers are some of the bigger barriers versus than just physical space. Do I like having them all within the training center system so that we can monitor for quality, those types of things, accountability? We have our gym services, you know, they have physical activity every day. We have a gym that's available to us.
I, I, I agree with you. I mean, I don't, don't misunderstand. I, I, I agree with you and I think doing a class every seven months and that'd be two classes in 14 months is much better than we were doing before. I mean, so I'm, we're, we're still proceeding on that commitment. But what I'm wondering is if, is perhaps thinking outside the box a little bit about a way to streamline that. For example, is it possible to take officers that are, that are already police officers someplace else as part of the class and put them on a shorter cycle than?
That's, we, we've looked at those over the years. Those, those issues have been brought up as far as, you know, taking people from other agencies. I don't like doing that for two reasons. One is we like to train them from the beginning, so we train them in our standards. I mean, you can still do that, but, you know, we basically want to train them through the whole class so that we kind of mold them for lack of better, for a better word into the type of officer that we expect to have on the street. The second thing is, I really hate stealing from other municipalities. That'd be, you know, if you look at Calif-
But we can't prevent that. I mean, if some, you put an, you advertise for police officers, we're going to take the best 50 we can get and if they happen to work for another municipality, well, that just-
Right. But if you, if you, if you start taking those, if you start taking the credit, you, you know, what they've done in other police department, you're going to have more of an influx to Oklahoma City basically because of pay or basically because of more police activity, more opportunities because we're larger, we do more things than most police departments because we're a full-service police department. You know, I, years ago, I looked at-
Your concern for the suburb, suburbs exceeds mine, I can tell you. I'm not, most of those things, I don't, don't trouble me.
Yeah. But I, I, I saw, years ago, I watched that happen in California and you watched them jump from one, one, one municipality to the other. The negative, the, the really negative thing that happened in California is it got the cities very competitive in salaries. So, you had salaries go extremely high in some cities just so they could retain police officers from jumping to an LA-
That part, you got me there on the top.
Okay.
Just sympathy, the sympathy side.
The money, the money part got you, okay.
The, the sympathy side is not something I'm real concerned about.
Well, we tried to, we, we worked real closely with other agencies. So, to me, it's important to keep that, to keep that relationship, but I, it's not as compelling as, as the dollars, I guess. So, I should have started with the dollars.
Bill and Jim, this is directed at both of you. From what I, from what I gather so far in, in your presentation, appreciate the presentation, we have a growing demand for police services. And if we don't meet that demand, then you've articulated some, some negative consequences that would occur. And a number of years ago, we had a survey done that forecasted the number of police officers that we needed out in the field at some level that was considerably higher than where we were at that time. And the council at that time had a commitment to fill that gap over a period of years, to ramp up where we did meet that target. And we've been working under that, I believe, for the last several years. Now, what I'm confused on right now, in order to get from where we are today and we're higher than we were back when, when the study was done, we're going to have to add police officers to the force while we are also coming alongside and filling the, the gap of police officers who are retiring or leaving the force for one reason or another. So, we need to maintain the level and then we need to add to it. I would be interested, I was always thought that what we were going to be doing, Jim, over these next several years, the number that stuck in my mind was 40 officers additional. And so, we'd fill the gap with those that were retiring and we'd be adding approximately 40 officers each year, whereas this year, due to various constraints that have been articulated, we're forecasting we're only going to add an additional 28 officers. I would like to know what the plan is to get to that level, how far we have to go and what we're going to do. And it ties, ties in with, with Pete's comments. How are we going to remove some of the constraints that are getting us from, from accomplishing that goal? And I'd be interested in that over the next several weeks before we finally vote on the, on, on, on the budget.
Offline, Larry's asked me to come up with a plan, to, to, to come up with additional 12 officers to be put into the budget. And I'd be happy to work with Larry, Councilman McAtee to do that. Excuse me. There are a couple of issues. We can't unilaterally do that. There's going to have to be either some new revenue sources outside or some other, other cuts in the budget, but we'll work toward that, that goal to achieve that. In the five-year forecast that we did back in the, in the, in the budget workshop in February, we had a plan that did not include, it, it ultimately ended up with 200 new officers, but it was, it was not a, a 40 a year. It was, it was a lesser number than that that was, that was proposed at that point in time. The, the chief with the 14-month program, you'll get there with the, with the two classes in 14 months, it's, it's just going to take a little bit longer to, to achieve that. And he has an incredibly impressive training program that's out there that I think is, is key to the chief to make sure that he has the quality of officers that he wants as, as we go forward. We'll get there with the 14-month. That's not the impediment at this point in time. You're able to, you know, we're, we're, we're able to get some added in and, and to accomplish that, that goal. We'll look at, at, at doing more as we go forward. 108 positions have been added over the last three years. It's, it's very significant. We can always do more with, with what we've got. In the meantime, the chief has done wonders, I, I think wonders with, with the additional money for the positions that he hasn't put on by doing some overtime and, and putting some positions in some key areas. And that's why I believe you're seeing the, the decrease in the, in the drive-by shootings and some of the other targeted crime statistics have gone down. I think, I think he's done a really good job of using that, that money in, in targeted areas. But the Councilman McAtee's approach, I will, I will work with him, come up with an alternate plan to, to see what, what it would look like to add some additional officers.
The, the cost of an additional 12 officers is about a million dollars, is that?
Yeah, a little, little under, I think. I think we decided it was closer to 900,000.
Your Honor, I have a question. Chief, on your major budget changes, you're changing the assistant 9/11 director from a police officer to a civilian. Will there still be a strong police presence at the 9/11 facility? Because, you know, I think your officers do a great job, but they need as much information and as good an information as they can get from the 9/11 dispatcher when they go out to answer all these calls.
Correct.
Particularly in this day when everybody's got several guns in their pockets.
Right. We, we've talked, you know, we've talked for years about transitioning over to a, to an assistant civilian position, which we really think in the long run works better because that civilian position can answer directly to the director where a sworn person by contract can't. So, and, I mean, but there, there is a strong police influence because supervisors in the field have to communicate if they have issues, they really still have to manage their personnel in the field in spite of dispatch and they have to work with dispatch if there's any areas of concern. So, it, it has to be, it has to be, you know, a seamless working relationship between the two. So, I think you still have it, you just don't have that physical presence in 911, which we used to think was a real big issue, but with, with the training and the technology, it's, I just don't think it is at this point.
So, you've got the greatest police force I've ever seen. I, I compliment you on your work done so far. We need everything we can to protect those officers.
Yeah, and the dispatchers are the lifeline. I tell them, they've got a stressful job, but they're a lifeline, not just to the citizens, but to those officers out there and the job they do. And they do a tremendous job. They really do.
Councilman Ryan, presently the, the director of 911 is former deputy chief, David Schubbs. And, and, so there is really a, I mean, that isn't a requirement of that position, but, but having that prior expertise in that position has really been a very, very helpful.
I have a question. Back on the numbers thing, the, if, if we only allocate 28, which is what's proposed, is that going to slow your process down any? Like, is what we're doing going to slow it down in the next fiscal year?
No, it's not going to slow it down. The actual sworn positions being added is 21.
Right.
Total positions are 28. So, if you're talking about sworn that have to be trained, you know, as officers and you're looking at 21 positions. But actually during this year, the 21 is, you know, is, we're just now, we just now got caught up with filling our vacancies from the time we didn't have recruit classes for two years.
Right.
And you, and when adding those 70 positions, adding 20 to that, we're going, we're, having, having those two schools every 14 months, we're going to catch up to the point within the next couple of years where our classes could be smaller if, you know, by, you know, because our vacancies, we're becoming younger because we're adding more people. So, we're going to have, you know, probably fewer vacancies, regular turnover vacancies, which right now I think we run about 30 to 35 a year. So, in other words, you'd have one class that's, you know, 35 regular attrition vacancies plus new positions, maybe 20 new positions and then the next class would be all new positions.
So, you're going to continue to have back-to-back academies with full, for, for the, for the next 12 months?
Right. We'll, we'll probably, even, even if we, you got to the point where we added all the officers that, you know, that, that were going to be added and we'd probably still end up having two classes just because of the number of officers that, that we have now. And, and really, if you have a smaller class, it's really a better, it's really a better class if you have a 30 to 35-person class. It's really, the, the training's much more effective.
Because I think that's the biggest issue. I, I don't want us to be the hindrance of, of you guys continuing-
You can add all the, all the officers you want, sir. We'll, we'll do, we'll take care of that. Okay. All right. The one computer forensic examiner, this, this, this is a position that we, we have had since 2007. It was funded with Homeland Security dollars. All those dollars are finally coming to an end. coming to an end. So we're, we're going to actually make that a full-time position and, and fund that with general funds, so that's why that's in there. One Latent Fingerprint Examiner, this will be a brand-new position. We've, we've had a backlog there. Over, over the last several years, we've hired, we've hired part-time persons to come in and try to, try to decrease that backlog, which we have, but we feel like with, with the added numbers of fingerprints that were, we, you know, that come in now, that we need to increase that by one examiner to actually keep up with the everyday workload, not just the backlog. Again, this was mentioned by Council, delete one database technician, increase funding for, no, this wasn't, this isn't the 911. This is, this is actually what I talked about before, we're getting the new program, Leads Online. We had a pawn shop detail that had two technicians. There's a cost to the Leads Online, an annual cost to that. What we did was, we realized by having that program, we only need one person overseeing that program, so we reduced, we reduced it by one person and used that salary to pay for the program every year annually. So it's really a zero cost, it turned out, and it's a much better program than what we had before. The next, the next category is additional fuel for the helicopter. It's showing the change is $150,000 increase. The actual, the actual total for the new helicopters, they, they do burn more fuel, they do use more fuel, but the actual total fuel budget is, is about, is $188,150. So before, we only had, in our budget, we only had $38,000 budgeted in our budget, but we actually used about $100,000 worth of fuel every year. So the increase in fuel for the helicopters is not $150,000, it's actually about $88,000 would be the additional cost of having the new helicopters. But now, all the money's going to be put in our budget upfront for those fuel costs, and so the total, total will be $188,800. The next change is four civilian investigating specialists and one lieutenant. We did, we added the four civilians as a, as a program several years ago, to take non-priority calls, burglary calls, property crime calls, they can process fingerprint. And it's been very successful. It's taken calls for service off of officers to have to take those minor calls and can respond to more serious calls. And we want to increase that program by four, which would be a total of eight civilian technicians or investigating specialists. And by having eight, we're going to add one sworn lieutenant to oversee that unit now. Before, we had another lieutenant do dual, dual roles, but with that many, we have to have a full-time lieutenant. We're going to delete one lieutenant at 911, as, as spoken of before, and add the one civilian Assistant Director. Our one victim services coordinator we've actually had for about three years. It was first started, we started that program with a VOKA grant, I think through the AG's office, and that's how it's been funded. And last year, it was funded in the, when that money ran out, it was funded in our Justice Assistance Grant. And now what we want to do is we want to budget it as a, as a full-time position. It will still be paid at this time out of Justice Assistance Grant, not general fund, but we do want to make that a permanent position rather than, than a grant-funded position. Okay. 911 Communications. I wanted to highlight a couple of, a couple of things that, that are being done, or have been done last year. 911 Communications Division is probably the one of the best stories that, that we have, not just for the police department, but for the city. The, the 911 Communications Division went to a 10-hour shift schedule after a lot of review, after a lot of analysis, because, and I, and you don't realize how big a task this is unless you set up there as a, as a deputy chief prior, or a major, or somebody that tried to deal with these issues at 911, the turnover, the sick leave, the overtime, the struggle to keep, keep dispatchers in their seats for doing a very tough job. And we just couldn't get there. But I have to, I... David, would your staff stand up? David, David Schub, Director, and his staff at 911 did a tremendous, tremendous job, and, and they spent months, because I'm telling you, I told them, I said, "You're going to have to prove this to me, that you can do nine, 10-hour shifts and make this work with, not much more staff." I mean, they had to add a few, but anyway, they, they did. They'd worked very diligently, proved it on paper. We did a pilot program for a year, and the pilot program caused a 99% reduction in overtime cost. It reduced it by $740,000. That's, I mean, that's significant. Had a, we have a 34% reduction in sick leave. They've, they obtained 64% reduction in employee turnover. That means people don't want out. They like the job, you know, because it's, it is a stressful job. It gives them, makes, gives them the 10 hours a day, but it also gives them more days to recover in between time, and I think that's been significant. And, and one thing that is no less significant is that they were able to provide 2,355 hours of in-service training to their 911 employees. Prior to that, zero. Zero training. Zero ongoing training, because you didn't, you couldn't take them out of the seat to train them. With the overlap in some of the 10 hours, it gives them time to have training sessions, to update them, and train those employees on an, on an ongoing basis. So I just, I think it's such a huge, huge success rate that I wanted to highlight it for, for you all and for, and also the employees over at 911. Our gang violence reduction, again, I think we had significant strides last year in 13. Knock on some wood, and it keeps, it continues. We, we continue with our Summer Gang Initiative. We've had that since 2007. That means during certain peak times in the summer, we pull officers from the divisions to specifically target some of the gang areas and gang issues, because our drive-bys go up, everything goes up with gangs, and we're continuing that. We have not, we have not changed that. We're overtime target zone enforcement, which is using the overtime that, from the vacancies that, that we have and the positions that you added, as we spoke about before. The creation of the Violent Crime Task Force. Then we have a multi-agency task force that consists of the FBI, United States Attorney's Office, Oklahoma County District Attorney, different entities within OCPD, including the FACT program. So it's, it's, it's a, it's a number, it's a number of entities that are actually, that are actually involved in that. I guess it's Homeland Security, I guess I was reading the wrong one, Homeland Security, FBI, County DA, some of the same people, and Oklahoma State Probation and Parole. Then addition of a day shift to the gang unit, like I talked about before, seven, seven of the 21 positions is going to go to make that a permanent unit. A call-in of gang members on probation. You know, I was skeptical at first, and we looked at some other cities that were doing it, but basically, the call-in is, is unique in that we take, we take violent gang members coming straight out of prison. We coordinate with the Department of Corrections, their probation and parole. We set up a meeting, we actually have a meeting, it's voluntary, but we have around 30, maybe 30, 30 of them that show up, gang members. And the people that, the entities that work with them and talk to them is the FBI, United States Attorney, Oklahoma County District Attorney, Representative of our FACT unit, Wayland Cubitt, the mother of a victim of a gang violence who speaks about her loss. The Star Foundation has an at-risk mentoring program that we, we utilize. And then we, we have a former gang member who speaks about his successes in life. The Urban League's involved with helping him find jobs. And then we have several Oklahoma City faith-based representatives, again, as well as the Department of Corrections. And we're all in the same room, we meet, we've got social services on one side, we talk to them on the other, we give them the opportunity to, to access social services, says, "We want to help you, we want to keep you out of that, that life of crime and gangs, but if you don't, here we are on this side, and we're eager to put you back in jail." And it's amazing, the gang, the gang officers, after we do these call-ins, it's amazing how they say that the activity drops significantly. And what it does is it impacts more than just those individuals, because, because we talk about their connections, we know who their, their other gang members are, who their associates are, and we know how to find them. On top of that, we also work with the ELC in probation and parole, and our gang officers go to the, will go to the ones that participated, go to their home, knock on their door, and check and see how they're doing, and see if they live there, you know, and what they're doing. So they know we're watching them, and at the same time, we're offering them all those services that we have there, ready to help them.
Chief, I've heard positive results from that, from the community, as well as the Department of Corrections. So job well done, that effort.
It's turned out to be a pretty good, good program. We've had two, we've had two of those meetings so far.
Chief, I'd just like to use this as an opportunity to reach out to the community and ask all those organizations, churches, homeowners associations, to contact the gang unit, to have members come out and speak with them, because we can all assist in this regard, and it's, some of the responsibility, I think, falls back on the community to be supportive of your initiatives and work with your units to help address the problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This, again, I spoke about it before, civilian investigation specialists, so I won't go into a lot of detail. Again, it's been successful, and again, we're adding the, the four positions and, and one lieutenant. But we have a great relationship with UCO. They're turning out excellent graduates in the, in the field of, you know, the CSI field, and so we work with them, we advertise, and I, all of our, all of our applications, our successful applications actually came from just fresh out of college, graduating out of UCO. So we're working with them in that regard, and also their, their computer forensic analysis. We have a person that's actually assigned at UCO to work in their program in conjunction with Oklahoma State Bureau of Investigations and others. So we have, we developed a really good, positive relationship with UCO. And then our new headquarters, that's what it looks like right now. Actually, it looks like a little more than that. They've got all the concrete poured, and they've actually brought in the steel, so we have steel laying on top of all that, and it'll, it'll start looking like a building here pretty quickly, because the steel's getting ready to go up. It began in, in January, we're projected in the fall of 2015 to complete it for 88, 88,625 square feet. And that's what it's supposed to look like when it's all finished. New Southwest Briefing Station, it's, it's supposed to be done this summer, finished this summer, again, and that's, that's where it is in its state of, state of construction right now. And it's, it's, like I said, it's due to be completed. It's the 54th in Portland, approximately 10,800 square feet. And eventually, we'll have, have the air support unit on that same location, eventually, at some point when we have to leave the airport. That's the plan, anyway. Any questions?
Questions for Chief?
Questions.
David?
Just a comment in regards to all the discussion about finding ways to increase the number of police officers. I would throw this out just as a simple idea to consider. You know, the economists, a couple of months ago when we met, suggested we may have a, an increase in, in revenue of 4% to 6%. I've yet to see a projection hold true despite their best efforts, and so we're coming in with an overall budget increase of about 3.5%, which I think is sound. I really do. However, if, say, six months into next year, we see that we're exceeding that, perhaps at that time, say in December, if it works with the scheduling of the classes, we could maybe reconsider the numbers, go into it for six months with, with the proposal, and then if those revenue projections are as good as what some people are anticipating, then perhaps revisit it in December, and also look at other positions, maybe with the firefighters or other requirements. So just a idea, I know it's very simple, but I'm just throwing that out there, should the economists be correct with their projections. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for the chief?
All right.
Thanks, Bill.
Next up is the Fire Department. Chief Bryant. Chief, his, Fire Department's been providing some resources up through the Logan County wildfires over the last couple of days, and I know they've been monitoring that situation very, very closely.
Not at current time, but again, about eight units Sunday and about three yesterday, assisting with that.
In the same regards to the City Manager, I think we had our helicopter unit up there also doing some help.
Well, and the Police Department had some other resources.
And I think that's good. We, we kind of got into a little isolation mode the last couple of weeks about just protecting our own territory, not looking, you know, one people, everybody that live in this area, to get the incentives, et cetera. I think we need to reach out like they did, and I think congratulations to the staff that did that.
Morning, Mayor and Council, and it's good to be here this morning to present and discuss the Fire Department's proposed fiscal year 2014, 2015 budget. We're on page 177 of your budget book, and while you're getting there and turning to that page, you know, I have members of my staff with me here, I'm sure they're becoming familiar to you, but Deputy Chief of Support Services, Mark Woodard, Deputy Chief of Fire Prevention Services and the City's Fire Marshal, Chief Kelly Sawyers, and Deputy Chief of Operations, Cecil Clay. I'd also like to recognize Phil Seig, President of our Firefighters Union, who's brought members of his executive board with him this morning. And Clint Regir, our Business Manager, who's done a lot of work in preparing our budget in this presentation. Mission Statement of the Oklahoma City Fire Department is to provide emergency response, fire prevention, and public education services to the Oklahoma City community, so they can have their lives and property protected. And again, that's our, been our continued mission statement for many years now. Our major department issues are reducing fire fatalities and property loss, and what we see is because of a lack of awareness and application of personal safety measures by residents that could result in fire fatalities, injuries, and property loss.
Chief, may I interrupt you for a second?
Yes.
I have a question, and I apologize for my innocence, but on the strategies under Issue One, the last one is to provide online pre-inspection checklist. Can you tell me what that is?
Excuse me, could you repeat that? I'm sorry.
My voice went away. On the strategies under Issue One, the last one says, "Provide online pre-inspection checklist."
Yes, sir.
Can you tell me what that is?
Well, again, we have a lot of requests for service for inspections, and so therefore, to make sure that people, businesses and so forth are prepared for those inspections, that we give them that online pre-inspection checklist, so they can address the issues that they need. Oftentimes, when they request an inspection, we go out and they're not ready, which requires a re-inspection. So there's additional cost as far as staff hours and that. When if we provide them that information upfront online, they can look at that and make sure that they've addressed the issues that we're going to be checking for when we go out.
Thank you very much. That's a great program, it sounds like.
Thank you. And the strategic result for that issue is that by 2017, each year, the structured fire fatality rate in Oklahoma City will be at or below the national average, which is 1.05 for 100,000 residents, based on the latest available information from the National Fire Protection Association. You can see there in 2013, our actual is 2.7. In 2014, the estimate is 1.15, and again, our target is 1.05. And the next slide, we had three through December of this year, which is what the 2014 estimate was based on, but we have not reported any in January, February, March, and we had a fourth fatality in April. So that brings that estimate 0.77. And you can see the graph there. Again, with the exception of the few years there where there were some spikes, and, and most of those are, would be multiple fatality incidents, some were involving crimes and things of that nature, we have been trending downward over the last 10 years. So we're right now at four, and I can tell you that, you know, in a common denominator, in most of those instances was lack of a working smoke alarm, which we have aggressively addressed through our Project Life Smoke Alarm Program here in the city, and we can talk more about that here in a little bit.
Chief, I hate to interrupt you all these time, but...
That's fine.
I, I'm, I'm just curious. On the training you're doing for, you know, for the public...
Yes, sir.
Have you got a special program for high-rise buildings?
Yes, sir.
Like we're getting more in Oklahoma City.
Yes, sir. Again, our, our Public Education Work Section, they develop a lot of fire safety programs for really whatever business that you have. So obviously, a high-rise office building, we can, we can address the issues that are specific to high-rise, as well as a large, like warehouse-type or manufacturing-type facility.
Thank you.
And again, to address the public education and fire prevention aspect of it, by 2017, the community of Oklahoma City will benefit from comprehensive fire safety, fire prevention education, as evidenced by 100% of elementary schools in Oklahoma City Limits receiving second-grade fire safety presentations every year. And we did reach out, and were able to get to all 99 of those schools this year, so we met 100% of our target. And also, 31... And also thirty-one percent of the Oklahoma City citizens reached through non-emergency public contacts. And that's not necessarily the ongoing formal public education, public safety education programs we have so much as it is that our firefighters out at each individual station, meeting with homeowners associations, meeting with their local schools in their area. So, we're, we've reported about nineteen thousand, a little over nineteen thousand of those emergency contacts. I don't think a lot of our firefighters give themselves enough credit because sometimes just out in the normal course of their duties, they reach out to citizens when they have the opportunities and give them fire prevention literature and speak to them about fire safety. And sometimes they don't report that as, as much as we would like for them to, but, so we try and capture all that that we can. Another one of our department issues is increased service demand and that by population growth, development, and changing demographics, coupled with the increasing role that we have in EMS delivery, emergency medical services delivery, we will lead to growing demand on Fire Department services and resources, which if not addressed, could result in increased response times leading to property loss and deterioration of patient condition and increased delays in delivering other services. Our strategic result for that issue is that by two thousand seventeen each year, the citizens of Oklahoma City, even anticipating growth in the outlying areas, will still receive emergency responses within seven minutes, seventy percent of the time, in order to protect their lives, assess and treat a medical emergencies, and limit damage to property and the environment. You can see there, the reason why we've put "not available," we, we changed our reporting on this. At one time, we reported just what the Fire Department was responsible for as far as dispatching. And while that made sense to us, it wasn't easy to explain as far as overall response time. So, we changed our criteria on how we capture and report that data and that now we're reporting from the time somebody calls nine-one-one and the nine-one-one operator picks that call up and begins that process. So, we've included that, which has increased that overall response time by about a minute or so. And as you're aware of, we started the Medical Priority Dispatching System where now we're only responding to the higher priority medical calls and allowing IMSA to process, process that information and determine the priority of that before we respond. And, and that's added some time as well. So, again, in, in two thousand thirteen, we were reporting this in six minutes, we've changed that to seven minutes because of the additional time that we're factoring in on this result.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me again, on the strategies under issue two, you have one trained and hire additional paramedics?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a goal, have one per station or one per truck or, or how's that work?
Well, the goal has been for several years to make all of our engine companies, which right now we have thirty-six in the city, advanced life support, which would have a paramedic on them. We're currently at twenty-eight. Each recruit class, we hire a number of paramedics, it's, it varies by class. And so, as we get those paramedics hired and we also have a few of our incumbent firefighters who are going through that training, we can add those additional engines. So, I, I, I think we should be able to upgrade within the next year, at least one, hopefully and another two or so.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And so, our two thousand fourteen estimate sixty percent and the two thousand fifteen target would be again, seventy percent. Another one of our issues is the age and condition of our, our facilities and that a growing number of our stations and other facilities do not meet the needs of modern fire service, which will result in increased facility maintenance costs and a diversion of resources from direct services to the public.
Excuse me, Chief?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to point out, that fire station's in Ward Seven, I had the...
Yes, sir.
...opportunity to visit that fire station several times and it is most definitely aging.
Yes, sir. Station twelve, I believe, is in that about forty-year-old range. Yes, sir. To address this issue, last year, you approved us to go out and hiring a consultant to do an assessment of all of our facilities and basically identify what our needs are. Does that station need to be rebuilt or does that, could that station be okay with a major remodel and prioritize that? We've selected a consultant, but we're still in negotiations with them. We don't have a contract with them as yet because we're still working through the, the cost of that and the scope of the work. And so, hopefully, we'll be able to complete that here within the, the upcoming year.
Chief, one more quick question.
Yes, sir.
Do you need your own helicopter?
Do I need my own helicopter?
The Fire Department, I, I, you, you would like one, I'm sure.
Can I answer that?
But, no, but, you know, it seemed like during the grass fire stage, we use helicopters to dump water.
Correct.
And there's always a lag between the time we can get the helicopters for the National Guard on the scene. If you had your own helicopter that was designed specifically to be a tanker helicopter?
Yes, sir.
That'd be a good solution?
That'd be a wonderful solution.
How much, have you got an estimate, how much that would cost?
I don't have an estimate of that. I, I can tell you that we have addressed that with the recent Police Department helicopter purchases. I believe that the increased size of their, the power of those helicopters, we've discussed, do have the capability of dropping small amounts of water. So, we're going to look into that. So, maybe we can use those resources. We usually get pretty good support from the military on that. Again, there is sometimes a lag time and if there's another major incident going, that there's sometimes they're tied up with that. But in, in most cases, we can get those assets pretty quickly and depending on the conditions, if, if they can even get airborne.
Thank you.
But that, we have looked at that and hopefully, we have something here locally where we could do something very initially and quickly with the helicopters that the police are So, we added a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the Fire Sales Tax Fund for the fire facilities assessment. And we also added another hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually to facilities maintenance budget for our current facilities. What you see there in that picture is a rendering. Fire Station twenty-six, and just kind of wanted to mention that while I'm on there, that would be the first of the two thousand seven general obligation bond projects that we will be opening. And so, that's an additional station than what we have now. Should be operational, I think, about May twenty-first and we're planning more of a grand opening type ceremony, probably first of next month in June. So, hopefully, you all come out and as we open that facility, it's a very nice, modern facility in the southwest part of the city. To look at our budget by funding source, you can see the majority of our budget, ninety-three point one million dollars is in the general fund. The other major portion of that is the Fire and Police Public Safety Sales Tax at forty-one million, then MAPS Three Use Tax at eight point six million, City and Schools Capital Use Tax. The MAPS Three and City Schools Funds, some of that is used for capital as far as buildings, but primarily, as is in the case with the MAPS Three Use Tax, is fleet replacement, which makes the total of all funds proposed for two thousand fifteen, one hundred and thirty-three point seven million. Major budget changes, we're going to add a uniform Code Enforcement Inspector. Last year, we saw a sharp increase in the number of requests for services as far as a new construction, permits, and inspections. It, it, the, the demand really put us outside of our, our normal three to five-day turnaround that we like and more toward the ten-day type. And some of you may have got calls about that, I understand that. So, we addressed that in, in the interim last year by putting a, temporarily increasing that. We also added a civilian plan reviewer to make sure that we go through those plans review process a lot more quickly. We've had those positions in place now for a little while, a few months. And again, we are, we keep up with that demand and make sure that we process in the shortest amount of time for those people that are trying to open businesses and so forth. We, we're proposing to make those permanent in the next year's budget. The addition of four firefighter positions for Engine Fifty-One. Engine Fifty-One is the additional engine that we have at the Headquarters Station here at Fifth and Chartel. We believe with the increase in residential development, population in the downtown area, also with the increased number of special events that we see, that it's preferable to keep that engine in service. Originally, that was planned as part of our consultant study back in two thousand seven to take that piece of apparatus and the staffing and move that out to the new Station Twenty-Six. We believe that if we add these four positions, which is the minimal amount we think we, we need to have to do this, we can not only open up Station Twenty-Six like it's proposed to be and have it staffed, but again, maintain Engine Fifty-One in service at the Headquarters Station. We're also proposing to add the Wellness Program Sergeant. We've had a very good beneficial wellness, health and wellness program for several years now, over ten years, and I think that's done a, it's been a big benefit to our firefighters as far as having a workout program for them. We assess their overall health every year and it also provides for an annual physical exam. Again, I think this is a big benefit. It gives me as the Fire Chief, an idea of where we are health-wise among our members, things that we need to address to make sure that they're fit and able to do the, the work that we require them to do and provide the best services to our citizen. We've had a coordinator over that program for all these years, it was a special assignment. So, we're wanting to make this a permanent position, which would return that special assignment back to the field and again, have somebody over that program full-time in the sergeant or lieutenant rank. We also removed the construction budget for Fire Station Twenty-Six. We added one point one million dollars last year from the Fire Sales Tax Fund to complete the Station Twenty-Six project. The project's completed, so we need to remove that from this year's or the upcoming budget. And under vehicle replacement, five, five million dollars. The impact of those budget changes to operations, and I went over this a little bit already, but again, Engine Fifty-One remains in service and allows us to maintain good adequate coverage here in the downtown area with the special events and again, for the increase that we've had in residential development and population. The Code Inspector and Plan Reviewer again, allows us to keep up the increased demand in code compliance program.
Chief, I just really want to thank you for your nimbleness and flexibility in looking at all these things. You know, when we do plans, a couple of years...
Yes, ma'am.
...the way the community changes is really significant and so I appreciate your willingness to take a hard look at that.
Absolutely. And something we took a look at about six months ago because we knew this was coming up and looked at our latest data and back when the consultant did the report, the, the number of calls that Engine One and Engine Fifty-One making, even though we've reduced them by about twenty-two percent with the Medical Priority Dispatch Program that we've been doing here the last few months, we were still beyond the number that the consultant recommended as far as the decision point whether to move that engine, that extra engine out there or not. So, we were still above that and of course, we're still continuing to increase. Caveat to that might be that we have two additional stations that we'll have to staff as part of the two thousand seven bond program and depending on revenue growth in the future, we, we, you know, that might have to be an option in the future, but for now, I think we, it's a, it, we're, we're good in, in keeping that engine while we open up the new station.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
I, I have a question about, and it revolves around the decision about Engine Twenty-One, Fifty-One. Originally, that was going to be moved to the new southwest area.
Yes, sir.
And, but some of the things that flowed from that discussion had to do with the staffing at, you know, Station Twenty-Eight and the one in northeast Oklahoma City that had to do with making that Engines ALS. Can you explain exactly what all is going to transpire in, with regard to all three of those situations, the station northeast, the one southwest, and the one in Twenty-Eight?
And, and thank you, Councilman White, for bringing that up because that was, you and I had talked about that and so, thank you for bringing that up.
Station Twenty-Seven and Twenty-Eight, the two stations that you're referring to, again, one in the far northeast quadrant of the city, one far southeast, those are staffed with an engine company, which right now, those engines can run with a minimum of three people and they each have a brush pumper, which are the apparatus that we use for wildland fires primarily. Those are staffed with two people. We could have done that by removing that person off that brush pumper, but we now have enough, the, the staffing is out there, that we can maintain those apparatus in service. We can maintain those stations with the current number of personnel that are assigned to those stations, so we're going to maintain our minimum staffing requirements. I think a thing that we might need to discuss going forward about those two stations is, does it serve a higher purpose to maybe adjust the staffing at those stations to upgrade those engine companies to advanced life support to provide a higher level of medical care in those areas where I think right now with the new response time criteria of the ambulance service, that, that, that might be something that we should look at as far as upgrading the, the ability to respond to a higher priority medical calls in those areas. It still would not result in a net loss of personnel. We would maintain the same number of personnel at those stations and we might just have to adjust the staffing from that second person on the brush pumper to make it a fourth, four-person engine company.
What would, what would be the cost of doing that at each one of the two stations we're talking about?
Well, you'd need some additional equipment. I can't remember the last time we upgraded an engine company from BLS to ALS, what?
How much?
Just equipment-wise, we'd probably need about thirty thousand to make, but we have that in the Fire Sales Tax Fund because our ALS program is funded by the Fire Sales Tax Fund.
So, to make that happen, what's the process?
Basically, we, we would just put the additional equipment necessary to provide advanced life support on that, those engines. And we have...
If it's only thirty thousand, did you say thirty thousand?
Yes, sir.
Is that what I heard you say?
Approximately, yes, sir.
Why don't we just do that? I mean, we have reduced, I mean, I, living out there, I'm, I'm very familiar with the, with that part of the situation.
Yes, sir.
I mean, once we reduce the required response times by, by IMSA, I mean, you guys are it. I mean, if you, if, when you get there is, it's, when it's going to make a difference. So, I mean, for only thirty thousand dollars per, for those two stations, it seems to me...
Correct.
...we ought to just include that. I mean, if it was three hundred thousand, but thirty thousand is just...
The availability of paramedics obviously is another issue and Councilman Ryan brought that up. And so, I, I believe, like I say, right now, we, we could possibly do one. I don't, I may have to see the next recruit class and the number of paramedics we have to see what we can go forward with. And I'll also remind you that it's been Council's direction for, ever since we've had the ALS program, to do that by the busiest engine as far as total number of calls in, in that order. We're, we're pretty much to the point where we're getting out to those areas now. I think the next one up may be Engine Twenty and, and Councilman...
You know, we've had that conversation before. I'm not, I'm never, I've never been convinced that the busiest engine ought to be the criteria. I've always thought that response times ought to be factored into that more than just which engine is the busiest. If you do which engine's the busiest, you're going to have all your resources located right outside your office door because that's where the activity is. But when you get further out, like way out in the southwest or way out southeast or northwest or northeast, the response times have got to be, be factored into that decision, it seems to me.
And I absolutely agree, again, but, but that's been the direction of Council since we've implemented ALS program. So, therefore, I, I'd be more than happy to discuss it at any time as I have in the past as far as i-if we have a, a new strategy to, to implement that program because I believe it's worthy of discussion.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm interested in, since we know there's problems in the rural communities, I'm interested in the next steps. What do we have to do to, to do those two to start off with? Because in the rural communities, I mean, the response time's terrible. So, I'm, I'm interested in what do we need to do from the horseshoe to make it happen? Because Councilman and White and I are definitely interested in this and, and this is one of those deal breakers for me, for us, the budget, because the response time out in northeast Oklahoma City, i-in the rural part, is, is terrible.
It's obviously some of the longest response times and again, not necessarily just the northeast section of the city, but you know, all the far corners of the city, we have that same issue, which is one reason why we've addressed it with the one relocation of Station... that same issue, which is one reason why we've addressed it with the one relocation of Station 4 from downtown out to the northeast area. Obviously, we'll, in the next few years, we'll be building an additional station in the southeast. We're fixing to open up an additional station in the southwest to address those very things. So you're absolutely correct that it's all about response time, which is why we've either relocated or we're placing some additional resources and personnel in those areas.
The suggestion I'm making though, doesn't really increase response times.
Decrease.
It doesn't change it.
Right.
I mean, the response times are going to be what response times are no matter what, without, because we're not adding another station, or we're not adding another engine, we're just adding more, more help, more medical support on the engines that are already there.
Higher level medical care, yes, sir.
So it seems to me, at the same time we've decreased, we've permitted EMSA to decrease their response time, or increase, excuse me, decrease their efficiency in effect, but increase their response times, it would seem logical that if for $30,000, assuming you can find paramedics to staff it.
Yes, sir.
We would include that in this budget. If there's more that needs to be done, I'd like to know what it is because I agree with John, I'd like to, I just don't see why, if that's the cost, saying staffing, why we can't just say, let's do that?
Issue isn't the cost. The $30,000 in capital is in the police safety, public safety funds.
Right, yes, sir.
That is not the issue. The issue is availability, the number of paramedics out there to cover the stations.
Sir.
Chief, well, but we, I mean, we can't solve that here. That has to be solved through a hiring process.
Yes, sir.
But if the situation is such that the engine is ready, and that's what you're going to do, and you have paramedics that come out of these classes, that's how you fix it. I mean, I, I don't think we ought to wait until we find somebody and then hire them and then train them for six months and do it. Why don't we just upgrade it now and be ready when we can find the people, or when you can find the people?
Again, as we hire them, we can certainly do that. And again, I don't have a problem with that. In fact, I agree with the logic of that, I really do. I think for a while now, we've needed to think more strategically about how we implement the ALS program other than that, and I've mentioned that before. It just takes your direction to do that. Again, I have the information that you need to make those types of decisions. I'd be more than happy to provide that to you so you can kind of see what the current data is as far as response times and as far as the number of priority, higher priority medical calls in those areas, those types of things. Again, if I'm not mistaken, and I don't have the current list with me, but I believe the next one to be upgraded was Station 20, which is Southwest 29th and Council. However, that's based on, again, the current criteria that we use to do that. That certainly could change. And again, we could provide the number, and then again, we might make a better case for either of the stations that we're talking about right now.
Well, can we do that between now and when we approve the budget?
I can get you the information that you need.
I'm sure there's a city manager report on his progress of the next levels of ALS and do that.
Correct.
It's, it's important to me. I mean, I, it's important to me in evaluating what we're going to be doing moving forward, and I'd like to have it as soon as we can.
Absolutely.
Chief, let me, let me go to something else. We're going to do that. Is, it doesn't seem to me, I'm not sure about how the numbers work on the Engine 51 thing. We're adding another station that has X number of, how many people will it take to staff that new station?
About 18.
18. And we're able to do that by adding only?
Five positions.
Four people?
Yes. We currently, right now, what our authorized number is, that they're out there, there's a current number of positions assigned to certain stations that would put them over not just their minimum staffing, but their maximum staffing. We're going to collect all those. So there's a certain number of those out there that we can use to add to those four positions to make that work.
You're comfortable that we can staff that station with just four more people?
With the additional four positions, yes, sir, I am.
The math just doesn't seem, you need 18, you know, we've got, if we've got 14...
If you just look at it from those additional four positions, it wouldn't work out if, obviously, if we just getting four positions to open that station. Again, those four positions, the wellness position that I talked about creates another one. Again, that returns to the field, so there's a fifth.
Yeah, okay.
And again, there's a number of positions out there throughout the three shifts and the six districts that are actually over what we normally assign to those certain stations. There, I don't want to call them extras, that's probably not a good word, but again, it's, say a station has 10 people assigned. Again, because of the number of people that we're authorized to have, and we recently graduated a recruit academy, there's maybe 11 people out there. So there's a number of stations that are in a situation like that. We gather those, that staffing up, add it to the five positions, or the four positions and the additional, the fifth position with the wellness coordinator, adding all those up, it gives us the number that we need to keep Engine 51 in service and open up Station 26.
I don't want you to think, or anyone to think, that I'm trying to micromanage your department. I'm not trying to do that. I'm just trying to understand how you can get, when you need 18, how you can get there with now five, we've talked about. That, I mean, it's just...
A couple of years ago, you authorized us 10 overage positions to help us to kind of keep pace with retirements. So depending on where we're at with retirements and vacancies, again, then there's a lot of, those are some of the positions that I'm talking about to you, that we can use those positions with the four additional and the fifth of the wellness coordinator added up totally will give us the number that we need to do that.
Okay.
We need 12 people to maintain Engine 51 in service, and so you take the four, the fifth, and the, some of the overage positions that we have out there, and that gives us that 12.
I thought you said it was 18.
Excuse me?
I thought you said 18.
To open up Station 26, we have that. Correct. Right.
And we've counted for five of them. Four, four and one, that's five in here, that leaves 13. And you've got 13 people that are out there?
No. Again, the four that we're requesting in this budget, the wellness position creates another, that's five.
That's five.
Okay, so there's another seven out there, overage positions, what have you, that we can get and reassign them to make, to maintain that engine in service.
I thought you said, I sound like I'm arguing with him, I don't want it to sound that way, but I thought you said it took 18.
That's for Station 26.
That's the new station?
Yes, sir.
And we're adding, we're adding five and seven, and that gets us to the 18 we need to?
I'm speaking of maintaining Engine 51 in service and what we need to do that. Okay, we, the staff? Go ahead, sorry, you were about to ask.
Well, no, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand where the manpower is going to come from. I, I'm further into this in the weeds than I wanted to get because I don't want to be perceived as micromanaging how you do it. That's not my, I'm just trying to understand it. So I hope you understand that, I'm not...
Well, I may be missing something.
The brush pumper just comes from another one.
Right.
So we didn't need those six people, they weren't efficient. You just needed 12 for the engine.
Right.
So the five plus their staff, we could piece of seven of those together, ten of the positions, those, the number of vacancies are, you can deal with even if you want that.
Okay.
The six people for the brush pumper, approximately, so just 12 of them.
Okay.
I think...
Okay. Yes. Thank you.
You said it better than I did.
Thank you.
Chief, could I ask a question?
Absolutely.
You know, when you're trying to increase the number of paramedics, are these individuals already trained and certified as a paramedic? Then you hire them and they go through the training? Or do you take firefighters that are currently employed as firefighters and send them off to training?
Both. Part of our ALS program that's funded out of the fire sales tax allows for funding for training of incumbent firefighters to go. We have a small number of our incumbents that request that training, and we send them when we, when they request it. But the majority of the paramedics that we're getting now, we're hiring as paramedics. We have a bonus, not a bonus, but an incentive program in our hiring process that we give them preference.
When, when you have existing firefighters go through the training, approximately, how long does that training last?
Paramedic training?
Yes, paramedic training.
I believe it's about a year and a half now.
Okay.
To get them through that program, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
All right, chief, thank you. Oh, you're not finished?
We still have more. Unless you're through with me.
I apologize.
That's fine, though, absolutely. And our lines of business, our organizational chart is what we're proposing. Administration, 10 positions, fire prevention services, 41 positions, operations 900, or excuse me, operations 887, support services 49, which would bring us to 987 total positions. Under administration, our proposed budget, 10.8 million. That's broken up into business services, which is 8.1 million, and executive leadership, 2.7 million. Fire prevention services?
Chief, excuse me for a second. The administration budget?
Yes, sir.
$10 million was considerably less than it was last year, $14 million.
Sir.
What accounts for that reduction?
I think maybe the difference...
I'm not arguing about the reduction, but I was...
Maybe the difference in business services as far as charge backs, risk management, IT charges, those types of things that we may not have that we had last year.
Thank you.
In fire prevention services, again, that's broken up into three different work sections, investigations, inspection and code enforcement, public safety educations, and you can see the budgets there for investigation is 1.9 million, inspection and code enforcement 1.9 million, public safety education 1.1 million. Under fire prevention services, some of the results that I wanted to talk about, we're at 27% of arson cases that were referred to the district attorney for prosecution, and we increased that target to 45%. Our public education department has been very aggressive about developing social media as far as a way to get our public safety education information out. What you see there in that picture is Chief Barry and Captain Mark Corvin, and they've developed a series of YouTube videos that people can access through YouTube that, again, talk about public, or fire safety education. And we recently, this past year, completed the inaugural Project Live 5K Run and raised over $13,000, and this is for smoke alarms, so that we can make sure that we maintain a cache of smoke alarms so that anytime any resident ever requests a smoke alarm, it's available to them, and we also install those. So again, that's the common denominator in fire fatalities is lack of a working smoke alarm, and we want to make sure that there's no reason for any resident regardless of, you know, income, what have you, that they're without a working smoke alarm. Under support services, that's broken out into fire dispatch and vehicle and facilities maintenance. The budget for dispatch, 2.1 million. A proposed budget for vehicle and facilities maintenance, 8 million. Some of the results under support services is 59% of our incidents are dispatched in less than one minute. The target is 90. That doesn't look very good, and we're going to continue to work on that, but I can tell you that has a lot to do with what I explained to you early as far as the criteria and how we, what we report as far as total response time. 69% of EMSA or police call taker incidents were dispatched in two minutes. The target is 90. And estimated, we're estimated to dispatch about 70,000 incidents in the coming fiscal year, or current fiscal year. Some additional results from support services, frontline fire apparatus available 92% of the time, and the target was 70, so we're doing well there. Completed approximately 1,400 fleet work orders in fiscal year 2014, and completed approximately 800 facility work orders in the same year. Under operational services, the proposed budget's 107.9 million, and that's broken down into emergency medical services, 72 million, fire suppression, 12 million, operations training, 22 million. The results under operational services, respond to fire incidents in five minutes 60% of the time, the target is 70. So we're working on that and getting better. Responding to EMS incidents in five minutes or less, 63% of the time, the target is 70, so we're close to the target on that. 73% of structure fires contained a room of origin, target is 65, so we're doing very well in that area. And again, to me, that has a large economic impact as far as property loss is concerned. An estimated to respond to about 2,500 fire-related incidents. Also want to point out before I move on to the next slide, I don't know how many of you saw, but recently, the National Association of EMTs reported that Oklahoma City was still number two in cardiac arrest survival rate in the nation. You know, a lot of that has to do with our system here and the way we address that, and a big component of that is citizen CPR. And our department, our firefighters at the station level, our emergency medical services work section, they provide a lot of citizen CPR training. So we're trying to do as much of that as we can, and obviously has a big impact on cardiac arrest survival rates as far as making sure that there's rapid and early intervention. With that, that concludes my report. Again, I appreciate your continued support, and again, it's a pleasure and an honor to You know, we have a great department, very progressive department. As probably one of the older generations of our department now, my ego and my inclination is to say that the younger folks don't do it as good as I did, but I can tell you that they do it even better than they do it, and what's most impressive to me is they do it a lot smarter, and I know that they're, that they're proud to serve as well. So again, we appreciate the support that we get from the council.
Chief, I agree with that. I think you've got a tremendous fire department, and it's all a result of the people that are working there. You know, 73% of the structural fires are contained to the room of origin, and the target was 65, which is, is good. The two previous ones where the actual response is below the target response for both fire and EMSA?
Yes, sir.
Does that do to those that extend the time, are those mainly in the rural parts of the city? And would you say if you concentrated, let's say, on the core part of the city, you would fall within your target?
Absolutely. I mean, again, down here where we're standing right now, you know, we probably, we're well over that target as far as response time because you're talking three and four-minute response times.
Right.
So when you do have to factor in the rural or the, you know, the outlined areas of the city, obviously, that impacts that.
Okay.
And again, another reason why we've addressed that back in 2007, and the bond issue was the three additional stations. And so I think as we bring those online, it'll have an impact on that. But again, increased service demand also impacts it, and it's just something that we have to deal with and make sure that we deploy our resources in the best way we can, most effective way we can.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thanks, chief.
Appreciate it. Thanks for your time this morning.
We'll adjourn the finance committee and recommit the council meeting. We have items from council. Pat, you have anything for us today?
Just a comment and a question. The comment is, I hope there are a lot of people watching this because I think our public safety people, all the department, all the city employees are a real benefit to the citizens of Oklahoma City. They don't understand all the time how good the city is run and how effective are the departments are. IT, fire, and police, all of them are good, and I think that's important. The question is, in the newspaper in the last week or so, there was an article about methane gas being mined from waste facilities. Is Oklahoma City participating in that?
We are. Are you talking about with waste management's efforts?
Yeah, they take, out of an old landfill garbage dump, they take some kind of facility, put it in, in mine, the methane gas that...
I think we're amongst the national leaders in that.
Now, does the city benefit from that? We get a reduction in waste management?
We're actually getting some job creation because they've started with a test facility, but they now are expanding it into... facility, but they've now are expanding it into a larger, a facility five times larger, with a significant capital investment. So there'll be construction taking place out there. And they also are able to run our trucks or their trucks, depending on how you look at the relationship we have with them, with this fuel, which is combining methane with natural gas and diesel, which is running it more efficiently and reducing their cost, which, reducing their cost reduces our cost.
That's good. There is some direct financial benefit to the city from these things.
Yeah.
And that's not the first one. The one down at Ward Four has been doing it for several years. Actually had a, a line over to General Motors, back from General Motors.
They, they vent it now, because they lost a customer. When GM left, they lost a big customer. But they, they took methane to the GM plant, and that was, GM's heat part was fired by methane. It's not, it's not as successful now as it once was, because the customer's gone. But, so they're venting a lot of it right now.
That's something the city should be proud of. We're, you know, promoting this, and we're utilizing this facility to produce this gas, the energy situation. It's an important part of the energy management program.
Agreed. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To add on to Pat's comment about waste management, this past Friday, we had the opportunity to attend a special ceremony where EPA announced that they have, they took Waste Management, the facility, the landfill on thirty-six and sooner off the Superfund list. And so that, that's, that's a, a true big step into the right direction. Waste Management did what was right in, for the community, and EPA took them off of the Superfund site. I'm not a big fan of landfills. I think we need to go to be a zero-waste city. But Waste Management is taking, I think, some steps to positive direction, so.
Meg?
I guess I just would kind of echo Pat's comments without, and following Pete, without trying to micromanage anybody. This is our biggest opportunity to really delve into how incredibly professional, just outstanding, staff that we have, and how well they run each of these departments. It's always an interesting time of year to be able to kind of dig deeply into how this city runs, and it's always really impressive. Thank you.
David?
Just a comment. I'm pleased that the Supreme Court issued their ruling yesterday that allows municipalities to begin their meetings, such as our city council meetings, with a prayer. I think that's very important. It's a little concerning, though, that the vote was only five to four, and we may see changes along those lines, which I hope doesn't ever occur. The other thing I'd like to see, Jim, we've talked about this, if the city attorney's office would look into the possibility of Oklahoma City becoming exempt from having to pay gross production taxes on the oil and gas produced within Oklahoma City limits. I think it's an issue that we should at least explore. Now, I don't think there's a statute in place currently that exempts municipalities from being subject to gross production tax on the revenue generated within the city limits. But it, the doctrine of, of states not being able to tax municipalities, I think, may override that provision. It's perhaps something that's never been looked at, but I would at least let our city attorney's office look into that, and if we need to file a suit against the state, let's do that and recover those previous years' gross production taxes as well. Maybe we could do a class action lawsuit representing all of municipalities in the state of Oklahoma. Thank you.
A couple of things. One, I want to echo the comments about what a good job I think the public safety people did, and how well that those budget presentations were made. I thought they were excellent, and it really is an opportunity for us to interact with them, and I, and I appreciate that opportunity. One thing I did not mention to Chief City when he was talking about the part about community outreach, I was, attended a, a couple of sessions at Hayes Elementary School this last week, or the past week, where they had a walkability study, and there was a police officer there, and he was absolutely the star of the show. I mean, the kids really responded to him. It was just really a nice setting. He was there and talked about, because it was, the conversation revolved around walkability, but it, to, to a great extent, it revolved around feeling safe to be able to do the, to walk around in your neighborhood. And he was, he was just a really quality thing. The city planning people that did it were excellent. We had volunteers, Target Stores volunteered to help. It was really a nice thing, and that's a very challenged school. I think the three schools where they held them were all pretty challenged places, and the, the, to have the city reaching out to those people, and having police officers and our planning department and all the, and the, and volunteers, was just a really nice thing to see. I just want, I should have said that when, when the chief was here, because his officer did such a good job of making presentation.
Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. I had the privilege of speaking to the South Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce last week, and coming back to my office, I was able to drive down South May, and, Your Honor, the, the MAPS three sidewalks that are going in are very impressive, and they're making good progress. And I know the residents in that area were very appreciative of, of the walkability that was developed as a result of that. Thank you, Your Honor.
James? All right. See manager reports?
No reports. I just want to point out, when we do the public safety presentations, I mean, I know there's some of those results aren't always positive, but, you know, it is what it is, and we're not, it, it's, it's not a PR piece when the departments are in doing the presentation. We, you know, we're trying to identify the issues, the issue statements are not always positive, actually, all the issue papers are general, or issue statements are generally negative, and we're very plain about our, what our results are, and what the numbers are, and where we've done well, and where we, we haven't done well, and we need to, to work on and improve. So I know, you, you, you go through the budget presentation, there's, there are some negative things that are brought out, but it's a very, I think, full and accurate look at, at what we're doing, how we're using those revenues, which is, you know, over a, over a quarter of a billion dollars, and, and, and where we're, we're having good successes, and where we need to tweak and do a little bit better.
All right, citizens to be heard. Michael Hinton?
Thank you, Your Honor and counsel.
Good morning, Michael.
I'm Michael Hinton, seventeen twenty-nine Northwest Third Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, seven three one oh six. First of all, I'd like to interject a comment. I'm particularly pleased to have been here to hear the presentation regarding the fire department, and especially aging fire stations. And I often do a walkabout here in downtown Oklahoma City, in particularly Northwest Tenth, and Hudson, Northwest Tenth, and Robinson, in which I observed a fire station that is a classic example of aging facility, and it, in hearing this presentation, Your Honor and counsel, I've seen houses on the south side of town that appear to be in better shape than this particular fast fire station that I've observed. Further, in lieu of renovating these aging fire stations, I think, in my estimation, it would be better just to demolish these old stations and build outright new facilities that would be up to date and the building codes, and it would be cost-effective. Now, I move quickly on to my main topic that I want to share with all of you, and that is, I set out over the past week to evaluate and observe the arrival of the new transit service, Embark. Your Honor and counsel, I've been highly impressed at the revision that has been made on the transit routes throughout the city, and I brought with me today an innovative little self-help project that I did, in which I compiled all, a copy of all the routes in the Embark system, organized it by number, and I've been passing this on to other riders that I ride and traverse across the city with every day, and which would be a quick reference guide to them, and which they organize their errands or travel throughout the city, and it's working very effectively. It has very detailed maps on each route that an individual, he or she, can look up, and no direction of travel. Further, unlike the old metro transit system, Embark is a more efficient and rider-oriented service that needs, meets the needs of where people want to go, as opposed to traversing neighborhoods, which was counterproductive and wasteful. And as time goes by, it is my sincere hopes that further improvements will be made that will include nighttime service, as well as service on Sundays and holidays, that will accommodate the needs of visitors to this city, and that is visitors from the national as well as the international community. I certainly thank all of you for this moment to be heard, and you folks have a blessed day today.
Thanks, Michael. Joe Nelson?
Excuse me, Your Honor. Michael, could you, if you have any extra copies of that, that brochure that you put together, could you leave a copy for us? I think that's a good idea, that maybe...
Oh, absolutely. I'd be glad to.
We could produce some for some of our writers.
Yes. Which office should I bring it to?
Just the main office, and they'll get it to us.
Main office?
Yes.
Certainly. I'll get on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe Sarge Nelson, Oklahoma City Mayor. Congratulations on your appointment. I know after the election, I haven't been here in a while, and to the rest of you. Today was a very interesting day. The Police Department and the Fire Department, I had a speech that, you know me, I come up and slap hands, take names, and do what I do. I'm not going to do that today. I was very impressed with it today. Your Oklahoma City Police Department, your Fire Department stand above anybody else. You, you've really got to put it right in that category. We're not going to lose any of you all for doing your job, but they can lose theirs for doing theirs. Our Fire Department especially. I had my feelings hurt a while ago when we gave the applause to the Police Department, nothing for the Fire Department. And we need both. Do not misunderstand, I'm not putting that disrespect there. Next Tuesday, I'll redo my report and take names and come in here and do my useful, but in the meantime, y'all have a fine department. They know what they need. You know what they need. They protect every one of us sitting here. I heard about the northeast side, southwest, Mr. I do listen, I do listen. The only thing I have a little trouble with is we're not getting the answers that we really need, but that's neither here nor there. I commend you all for what you do, and I hope you do well. I really, I really mean that. And when I bite on you, I'm deadly serious, but I won't come in here if I don't have my facts. Gentlemen, Mr. Jordan, you sure have changed a lot today. Just meaning a joke. Pete, hope you're doing well. Mr. McAteem, my councilman, I guess you lost Ed. Y'all ready to go eat, aren't you? I'll see you later.
Thanks, Sarge. Did you want to mention the Boulevard meeting, Meg, that's coming up?
I, I did. Thank you very much, Mayor. I forgot that as I was going along. I just want to remind all the citizens, anybody that's watching, that Thursday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday. I'm sorry, it's only Tuesday. Wednesday, we have a meet, a public meeting from, not we, ODOT is hosting a meeting from six to eight at the Cox Center, I believe up on the second floor. Parking may be at a premium, as we also have a fairly big basketball game that night, but the game doesn't start until eight-thirty, so I encourage everybody to come down and participate in ODOT's meeting to get an update on the Boulevard.
And I've been monitoring a couple of emails this morning, and I believe that they have made arrangements for parking at, at the Santa Face, at the Santa Face Garage, so, yeah, eight to, six to eight, and it'll be come and, come, come in and go with, with a lot of information available.
All right. And with that, we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.